Well, being six thirty. This meeting of the select board to order. Those in attendance. Brian.
I'm here, yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
And here.
And John is here.
And John is here, and Becky will join us later. The first part of the meeting is going to be an open forum where people may make questions and their opinions and definitely tell us what's going on. I'm going to ask the people if they are willing, give their names before they begin to speak. And given the audience that we've got, I don't see any reason that I need to leave out people for any community in another town.
Ten, twelve people?
Yeah, ten, twelve people. Zoom, yeah? Yes. Well, I think I'll start with the people in the room. Please.
Do you want me to begin?
Yes.
Okay. I'm hard of hearing, bear that in mind. I just came from a meeting in the
Although everyone knows you.
Helen Bethel.
My mom.
Sorry. I just came from a meeting with the open space committee. We are working on, among other things, a project focused on the watersheds for the drinking water. And we started out with the Gordon College Woods because they're so critical to the round pond and gravelly pond. And we did some digging, getting up all the information we could about the geology of the area, the soils, the topography, the whole history of Gordon College, old Indian land, and wanting to develop it. And what we found was that in the late twentieth century, nineteen ninety something, you could, we could give you more details if you wanted. The New England Bio Labs was very interested in building there. They joined with the Escas County Greenbelt in a project that was going to save all the Gordon Woodlands, the ones at Hamilton which did get saved, and that piece too in Manchester. However, the price was a million dollars. But Bio Labs was going to contribute to the effort if it could build its new headquarters on that property. And so they had a survey done, an exploration done of the protons of doing that. And we got ahold of their survey. And the survey basically says, no. And New England Bio Labs withdrew from the project because that land was not really appropriate for a major corporation. They needed they planned to have two large buildings, each ten thousand square feet, two stories, twenty thousand square feet. One to be built right away and the other one to be built later on as they expanded. And they found that the land was just not going to support that. And so they withdrew from the project. And Greenbelt was forced to find the money elsewhere to save the Hamilton Woods, which were saved. They were, they were, they're now administered jointly by the two towns. And they're in conservation. So anyway, we looked at that and that followed on an earlier effort that had been made by Christian book distributors earlier and then come up with the same conclusion. So our understanding is that no major corporation is ever going to want to develop that land. And so we proposed to go, can't come, go to the administrators of the college and discuss a conservation restriction that would prohibit smaller water in there. And if Gordon is not interested in that, at least to give us a fight right, excuse me, a right of first refusal if any small developer were to come along. Our thinking being that a small development in there would pose more of a risk to the water supply than it would generate revenue to the town. We have got this all in the memo that you will be receiving soon. It really it's held up just because the Congress didn't get around to formally adopting it. But they will be doing that. And I'm Steve Gang asked me to go and explain this to you. So you will be getting a memo. And this, this extensive memo that explains why we feel that the land is not worth developing. It can't be developed largely. It's not worth developing smallly. But at any rate, if Gordon College is not willing to accept that reality and let us acquire a conservation restriction, then at least if they would give us a right of first refusal, so we can make up our minds later when we actually know what is being proposed. It doesn't lock the town into, into anything. And in fact, if, if, if they were willing to give us a conservation restriction, they would want money for it. And we would work with green, with SS any C P to, to get enough money. See, the, the state will pay for half because watershed land. The state automatically approves watershed land. Or it's very generous, but we don't think we should have to pay Gordon College a great deal of money for land that really isn't worth much. So that's why it's all very up in the air perceptions. We cannot make that decision by ourselves. Anyway, the thought was to, to give you a heads up. But that's the way we're approaching it.
It's helpful, thank you.
I know it's hard for you to give a question if you have no material.
Hold the court getting the note.
Okay.
Thank you.
We appreciate hearing the history of it as well.
Well, it's, it's important.
Yes, yes. You're going to have to get your ride home.
And that doesn't rule out development elsewhere in the, in the other watershed. You understand Manchester has two very separate and distinct watersheds. One for probably around pond is the most sensitive because we own very little of that watershed. And this word woods is directly south of the ponds. It's so close, whereas the other watershed, which is to the east, is much more, is bigger, larger. And the land that would be developed, say by cell signal, is nowhere near as close to the, to the actual well as, as we have in this situation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What he serious that you need a ride home, let's keep it from our home. Do you need a ride home? Carden, do you need a ride home?
Oh, my husband's done.
Good deal, thank you.
You were here next? Yes, my name is Kim Logue and I live at one forty-two Summer Street. Just about a hundred feet from the pickleball courts. I am here to ask the board to thoughtfully consider moving the courts to upper pond near, I guess, the Dumb Club or the water treatment plant. Um, it's not just the constant hop, hop, hop for hours at a time. There are gaps during the day that's already going to establish there in the middle of the day, it doesn't seem to lighten up. But it's not. I think what's going to happen is good money is going to be thrown after bad because those panels are not going to correct the problem. There. Last week I had a gentleman outside urinating right on one twenty-seven. People out there with headlights, they call the police department, they come, it was pitch black. The hours say eight to eight. Comes to my house to tell me they have a right to do that because it's still eight, but they're out there with headlights in the dark yelling and screaming. And I've already talked about the swearing that goes on during the day when you miss the shots. It's just constant and it's not fair to the neighborhood. When they're, and I know that there's cost involved in it, but those fences could be repurposed, the, the nets could be repurposed, the money that has been set aside, which isn't a whole lot, could be put towards relocating them. And maybe the town doesn't have the money for that, I'm not sure, but maybe they could, you know, people who like to play pickleball, which is a great sport, don't get me wrong, it's just in the wrong spot. Maybe they could do a fundraising campaign to move it to a, a place where it's not going to be around anyone's home. I'm sure anyone in this room, if they came and sat at my house for a couple hours during play, would not appreciate it being in their front yard. And then on top of it, there's not supposed to be tournaments. This weekend there was a tournament over there that wasn't approved. But the police came, but they allowed it to continue. It's just not fair to, to people that own homes over there and their property values are probably decreased as a result of that. So I'm just here to express that. Once again, I've been told, well, you know, the train goes by twenty-six times a day. It's a total different sound. It's how it's third, the train, you hear the train for thirty seconds and it's not a sound that is bothersome at all. As well as the noise from sweetie park with families cheering on their children, totally different sound. It's not three hours of a constant popping sound from six courts, not just one court, but six. So if there is someplace else that it could go, I hope that the board will really consider doing that.
Thank you. Does anyone in the board? Questions, comments?
I would like to just say that is it the law?
Kathy Bellata.
You're, you're suggesting even the interim to, to put a bomb, that was called?
Oh, the law to willingly allow certain people to do it.
People from town could use it until such time that something could be corrected. I think that's a great suggestion because people are coming from all over. There's or the courts could be filled and there'll be a line of fifteen people waiting on certain days. And that's all I have to say. I hope you will consider it.
Very much. And yes, obviously that's one of the things we have to consider. It will be on the future agenda, I do want to know.
Okay, you'll let me know when it's on the agenda?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Chris, should be what? We're on here listening, okay? Jill.
Well, I'm here to listen, except I had a conversation with Chris on the way up the staircase. I'm not clear what you all may know about the bidding process for the M A H D redo of Newport.
Okay.
Blah, blah, blah. So I've been trying to get as much correct information about that as possible. I did go the open planning meeting, open space meeting today. Steve Gang seemed to think that there was no known bidder, that there was no known person.
As a matter of fact, this is the, our next order of business.
I learned that from Chris.
At six thirty.
Yeah.
And, and rather than speculate, perhaps we could have the, the people who are actually involved.
So can you, can you tell me who's coming at six thirty?
I think John Farback is the chair.
His, his mission is to update you on how that process is going. Well, that's what I need to hear.
Okay.
So other than that, I'll just wait.
Fine.
Maybe I'll wait, I don't know.
Or, or Yeah, go home and log in and
Yeah.
That's, yeah. But I, rather than speculate.
Fine.
If we have only
Fine.
Right, who is there?
So I guess we'll announce people from the Zoom land can raise their hands.
People from Zoom land should please raise their hands. I assume Chuck that you don't have anything to say to us in private in open forum.
Uh, no, I'm on the agenda tonight and I figure this was a good place I need to just hear what's going on around town.
Okay.
Sandy, has her hand up?
Yes.
Okay, hello there. Um, I have a couple general comments to consider. Hello, I'm getting sort of Is someone speaking? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I don't know what, what happened there. One thing that I'd like to see more of in town is a financial planning effort and information to the citizens when we're voting at town meeting that has a longer term trajectory. Every year we're asked to make some spending decisions and a lot of times they're in isolation. And considering where you're potentially going to have to do a lot more spending going forward on infrastructure and other big ticket things. I think we need a better view of what's coming down the pipeline. I do want to say that sort of at the nth hour, and it might have been, you know, because I didn't attend financial meetings, but getting information about how we should be managing our funds and there was, I think, Sarah weighed in on sort of the, the, how we were handling the fields and how that was being financed and how that might impact things long term was just, you know, it was helpful to get a little bit more of that view, but I think we need to go further and see three-year, five-year, seven, ten-year plans because there are things that we may not want to pass immediately because we know that we're going to have to spend going forward. I think we need more of that kind of view and maybe more workshops around that before we're asked to vote on things. So that would be one thing I would like to see more of somehow. And then secondly, I do believe that it's good to be able to hear varying voices and opinions. There are some meetings that are held that seem to stifle the discussion and other ones that get ahead of the topic with enough time where there's a good discussion that goes on and a good Q and A. One positive note was the session that was just held on the rotunda. There was a lot of time vested just for that topic. And there was a lot of information that went back and forth and a lot of voices that were heard at that meeting. I find that that's often a rarity and it would be good to make sure that we do that going forward as well as in some of the, the boards themselves, they need to have more of those different voices heard amongst themselves. So I think, you know, when we want to think about a democratic process, we need more of that in this town. Thanks.
On the, on the longer term, the finance committee and Greg have been working on not just five and ten year, but further had look, look, further looks at it. I suggest that you, I'm sure you do, read the agendas for the finance committee. They, about now, they should be working on more capital plans. Greg, do you have anything?
So we do have in the finance committees in a report that is available at town meeting, there is always a five-year projection of capital. And their, their narrative tries to address the longer, the operating lay of the land, but, but it's one of these areas where we can always do more, so we could, we can take it.
We're about to get the final facilities report, which is another thing that will impact.
Right, yeah. So certainly nailing down that facility plan will help give a lay of the land going forward in terms of what people can anticipate for, for larger expenses.
Yeah, I think having that view when we're actually posed to vote on things and it, it, it's not always going to be a one plus one plus one. It might be that, you know, one of those items, we, we need to, we need to table if we know that we're going to have to do some more investing. So I think having that visibility, I'm not sure everyone sees and reads everything and getting in front of it, that's great to hear and look forward to seeing more details.
Thank you.
Oh, Sarah Pierce, does her hand up?
Hi, yes, thank you, Sarah Pierce, Nine Friends Street. Thank you all for having this open forum first off, and I had two questions. One was, are there any new updates to what's happening with the Manchester Community Center? And I can give the second question now or we?
Oh, yes. Um, one of the items on
So I mean, the short, the short answer is that we are, are negotiating what we hope to be a long-term lease of, for the town to have the building and use of building and then turning around and sharing that use with, with the community center. So we hope to have more definitive information on that. We will be talking later this evening about a town meeting article to allow the town to enter into such a lease.
That's great. Thank you, yeah. And just a second, sorry.
This, this is a November special family.
And then just a second question, back to the rotunda. I know you probably all don't want to revisit this, but looking at the rotunda personally and, and talking with several people, you voted on to keep the rotunda in the water, which is excellent. And to do the necessary, or necessary upgrades to make it stable to use, but if you were able to get the same outcome at much less of a cost and use different materials, would you be open to having another proposal before signing on with the company or the firm that did that study?
We have a long history with that company, which has been successful.
So I mean, I guess my personal responsibility, if you have different information you want to share, you can, we can always take a look at it and compare it, but I, I don't know if the town is in a position to be spending additional monies on alternative.
No, yeah, I wouldn't ask the town to do it, just if it were additional information, you'd be open to looking at. And one concern, sorry?
If you have information, please share.
Well, I don't have it yet. I'm, I wasn't going to go out and get it unless it was something you'd be open to listening to. So I just wanted to ask if that were the case. One concern was through that firm, they say that the rotunda does need to be dismantled and in order to do the restoration or the stabilization of it. And that to me is concerning because if you look at the actual structure, I don't see how you could put that back and have it be its, in its original historical shape. But I'll be happy to look into a few different areas that people have mentioned and put something together. And if you're willing to look at it, that's great.
Yeah, I know, we would leave it up to the contractor in terms of sort of methods and means of construction, in terms of whether or not they take it apart or they try to lift it up with a crane and put it on land and then hoist it back into place. And that's, I think that's something we would need for the contractor to do.
We, we haven't signed a contract yet, you know, so it's
We haven't even gone up to bed. We're still in engineering.
In engineering design.
Yeah.
So.
Great, thank you very much.
Karen Bennett, does her hand up?
Hey folks, Karen Bennett, twenty-eight Lincoln Street. First of all, I want to thank you for having this open forum. I believe this is the first time we've been able to have like an open forum like this, and I think it is great that you're doing this. I would like, personally would love to see this like once a month where the public is allowed to come in and ask questions. I know that transparency has been one of those things that you folks have been struggling with. I think this is something that kind of puts the residents at ease that, hey, now there's a possibility you have a complaint, you have something going on, there's a place to do it. I think a lot of folks feel that we come onto some of these meetings and we can't discuss things. We can't, we're shut down or it's not on the agenda or whatever it is. So I for one, am thrilled that you've done this and so, or whoever has done it. So thank you for doing that. That's great.
What do we do as a board?
Great, wonderful. A couple of things that I still have issues with and I do want to bring up is, one is, can you guys please buy some external speakers to put in front of Greg and Ann because you're very, very hard to hear on a Zoom call? And they do have them. If you need some suggestions, please let us know. I, I can give them to you, but you're very hard to hear. Greg, you're easier here to, to hear tonight, but Ann, it's always very difficult to hear. So either yell like I do or speak louder, but that might be an alternative, but if you could. Some things that I think has stifled people to speaking up and I don't want to dig up old wounds, but I do want to say that some of the things that kind of turn people off from saying anything is some of the things that have come out of the select board. And as of recent, I heard somebody on the select board call somebody's comment on an open public forum garbage. And the minute you say those type of things to somebody, it shuts people off and it turns the rest of the residents off. So I really wish that, that folks would be careful with their words when you're talking to the residents. In addition to that, as far as the zoning and all, everything that's been discussed, and as you folks know, I'm pretty much involved. I'm on every call. I understand what's going on. The recent zoning call where everybody, or actually it was, I think it was a task force meeting where everybody was making sure that their personal land wasn't going to be touched, but the land that was going to be touched was the general district because it's not a single family district. So to me, that just seems like, you know, let's throw everything into the general district and, you know, because of course we're not in that district. So it just, that's how it feels. I want you to know how the residents feel because when you talk to people and they see those kinds of things, that's the impression that they're left with. And the last question I have is, has the special town meeting been voted on yet?
No.
The date?
We have suggested the date of November thirteenth.
Okay. I'm sorry, Ann, has it been voted on that that's the date?
No.
Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you.
Hello, Ben, Ben has his hand up?
Sorry, it's Mary Foley, one Pulaski Drive. Wasn't planning on speaking, but I, there's been so many good comments with spoken tonight from Helen Bethel with the Gordon College land that is very important to preserve for our water. So I think that's very important for all boards to discuss that and to tag on to what Sandy was saying about some finance topics, I would like to add to that. Before things go to town meeting that we know, again, she was addressing the whole picture. I know there's items that get voted on at one town meeting and then the monies end up not getting spent. So if we can know those things at, before we So if we can know those things at before we vote on. Different monies, um, I think an example just top of my head. Is the harbor master, I think we voted on um a floating harbor master office. And I don't think that ever came to fruition, so kind of. Wondering what happens with that money, where's it go, what you know, kind of if we can see whole pictures, whole numbers, that would, I think. Um, help residents be better informed, um. And then a question about the governance project, when will this be rolled out to other boards? Um, to do similar things that the select board is doing tonight, having kind of an open forum for discussion. Um, and then perhaps more communication between boards and committees. So that the boards and committees stay informed on things, thank you.
Okay, let me go. Your comments. Um, you agree with Helen Bethel, the private dollar plan ought to be, we ought to consider what you can do to protect it. Since it's important to our um general fund, water source. You'd like to know what happens when monies are allocated but not spent, and I can offer. A small insight into that, which is that. For example, there is a generator at town hall, which we've been trying to get moved. And we've just had terrible time finding. The pieces to build it, and I think that that money is probably eighteen months old or so. It's a project that's not every project can be done, starting. It it nothing is necessarily shovel ready on July first when the fiscal year starts, and. Sometimes something that looks as if it's going to be easy does take more time. We leave the money in those accounts, I believe, right, until such time as we decide that it's absolutely not going to be done.
So so for capital.
Yes.
Uh, monies can can stay there, um, recently, the the fires committee has suggested that. That be done for maximum of two years, and then we get an update. Um, but any monies that are not spent eventually, that all will then roll back to the general fund.
Yes.
So if it's not used for the purpose that it was voted, then it then it has to be. Rolled back to the general fund and re-appropriated. So there's no ability to take. Like the the example of the buddies that were for a uh basically a boathouse for the. Harbor master's office, so those dollars cannot be used for something else without going back to the voters, so.
Question in that regard, does it roll back to the general fund without the voters necessarily knowing, unless they read the financials?
Uh, well, that's true, it would.
Okay, so um it's it doesn't become a public comment, it just kind of disappears from that line and goes back into the general fund.
So for operating.
Yeah.
Expenses, that's certainly true, um, for capital, um, there. There may be a a vote to rescind.
Okay.
Yes, for example.
So we just did the ambulance.
Yeah, tonight.
Yeah, um, and the third was governance, um, and you would like to see other boards have open forums. Um.
Do you want me to?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You were the governance person.
Yeah, so uh Mary, uh just for your information, um. We had two, we we invited the chairs of all the boards and committees to two meetings last year to help us shape what we do under the governance proj- project. And then, I think it was in June, when we all uh met at the high school, the boards, uh chairs and committee chairs. Of all of the committees met at the high school, I want to say June, um, to kind of plan out some concrete ways for the committees to work better together. Um, one of the top things that we're working uh with the towns. Uh, folks is to improve the website, to help the dissemination of information, it's it's just really hard to find. Uh, what people are looking for, and and a few other things, and now we're currently planning another meeting, we hope for January. Um, so we're in that planning stage right now, but we've been meeting with the chairs of all of the boards and committees. Uh, help us shape what we do and improve the communication, and so far, it's been very well received, um, and we're just gonna, you know, keep going.
Excuse me, excuse me, department heads there as well?
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you, yes, Brian, the on the June meeting, the first two meetings we had were just with board and committee chairs. And then the June meeting also had department heads, so it was all the department heads and and the board and committee chairs.
So if I may follow up with a couple of those?
Would you speak up, I'm sorry, I had a hard time hearing.
Could could I just follow up with a couple of the comments made after my questions?
Sure, yeah, yeah, of course, sorry.
So no, I, so thank you for the update of about the um governance, and and I hope it trickles down to actually the boards, I mean, I think it's one thing to discuss with the. Um, chairs of the boards, but I mean, I happen to be on a board and I I'm not hearing about it, so. Um, I'd like to see some of this stuff um enacted across. Across boards and committees and and um and more transparency and um discussions and questions and answers and all that. Um, so and then just getting back to the one finance piece, so with the example of the harbor master. Um, floating office, did we vote to rescind those funds, I just don't recall that.
No, those are just rolled back.
Okay, so could you clarify again what funds we need to rescind and what ones just roll into the general fund?
Sorry, I didn't hear the question.
So could I, could you just clarify which what types of um items we need to vote to rescind the funds if we're not going to use them once voted in? And which ones just roll down to the general funds with no vote?
So there's no requirement to officially vote to rescind, but if you wanted to reallocate and they hadn't been res- rescinded yet, then there'd need to be a vote. So if there were, if if a if a capital item was sitting for three, four years. The finance committee and selectmen could decide to to. Roll those dollars back to the general fund, and it doesn't require a an official vote. But for example, with the ambulance funding that we recently did, um, there was a desire to reallocate those dollars. And so it hadn't been rescinded yet, so it was part of the approval to spend those dollars differently, so the voters were asked to rescind it and redirect it towards. Um, the uh the ladder truck. So those those dollars were still sitting in the uh the ambulance fund. And so a a need for rescissions um was made as part of the vote to approve the new the new use.
Okay, thank you, yeah, I mean, I guess I would just say if we if there's ways we could be um. Clear on some of these things, I think it would help residents to understand the monies better, or at least myself, thank you.
Sarah Pierce, that's her hand up again.
Hi, yes, thank you um for taking another question, I just had add tried to ask this and another point, and it was not the right time, so. I'm just wondering, are there, have there been any interests or are there any conversations happening about? The MBTA ferry coming to Manchester, because I know it has just opened up um recently in June, a stop in Lynn. Which is really only two towns away from Manchester, and I wondered um with the dredging of the harbor. And the intentions of the dredging of the harbor, if that's been discussed at all.
I have.
Yeah, no, I mean, you you read Bayern's uh.
I, yeah.
Comment.
Um. I have read Bayern's comment that we don't. It's longer, a lot longer from here, from here to Boston than from Lynn to Boston. Um, and we don't have a good landing place for him. Um, and he recommended against it.
Okay, so there's no plans to do that?
Not at the moment.
Okay, and then just as far as like MBTA grants, is there a way to list on the town website which grants the town? Applies for that are directly connected to the MBTA. Project and are which are just grants being applied for from the town, separated?
Let me put. A slightly different. Um, slant on that. We refer to the MBTA zoning because it's an easy name, but it has very little to do with the MBTA. Um. It's it's a plan by the state to encourage towns to provide additional, to to provide multifamily housing. If the connection to the MBTA is. That happens to be a good collection of towns to go after, so. I, your your question is fine, we but. The grants really aren't in any way related to MBTA, they are grants, they are granting sources that the state. Would deny us if we were not to follow um the forty A section three A law.
Well, could you put a list of which grants they would deny us if we weren't to move ahead with the MBTA project?
So there is a listing of grants that um over the last ten years that. That potentially would have been denied, according to the state's guidelines, so the state, the law itself came out with with three buckets. They came up with um uh capital funds that primarily go to the housing authority, we we that's the only capital funds that have come into Manchester. Um, there's mass works funds, and just third one is housing, um. I see you remembering, I'm forgetting the the designation, there's a. I don't know. I don't remember dredging. No, those are mass works, so mass works, capital funds and and housing choice funds, I think is a part of that designation. And then they came out with additional guidelines that listed a whole um. Longer list of of grants that would likely be denied if communities were not participating, so we do have that list on the on the website. Um, frankly, with the with the change or the or the new position from the AG's office. Um, in my mind, that's become much less of a a critical point. I I think it's more critical, you know, decide whether or not you want to risk getting sued or not, to me, that's a bigger issue than the grant funding.
Well, there's a big misconception in the general public about the way this whole MBTA project is. Being proposed to the public, is being handled in general. And I think it's important because people will say, well, if we don't go ahead with the MBTA project, we're gonna lose our grant money. So I think we need to be really clear to the public what, in fact. They are in fear of losing, because I'm not sure that they're getting a clear message, I didn't get a clear message from what you just explained. About the grant money and what's listed on the town website. That was very confusing to me, to be honest, um.
So both things are true, the 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 fact, both facts are there, um.
Right, but then but then the next thing that's brought up is that the town's going to get sued, so I think that. It's important to let the town residents, citizens, and whomever know that opting out is. A valid option, it it is an option. Um, I think a lot has to be taken into consideration before we just start saying we're gonna get sued. By the Attorney General, we have really zero information. Of how this project is going to actually affect Manchester by the Sea. And we can't clearly state what grants are going to get taken away from us by the MBTA. Yet it's constantly said that we'll lose our grant money, so there's just, it's it's a very fuzzy. Project in general, and we're so little data, even to date, as to far, as even. How many multifamily homes do we have, which areas are going to be zoned, um, how will this affect things? I mean, if people are complaining about pickleball court noise, which is completely legitimate. Imagine the construction and the noise that will take place. From adding possibly five hundred and fifty units to our small coastal town. So I just think that we need to be a little more transparent and stop going right to saying that we're going to get sued if we don't do this, because there's a lot of information.
Attorney General has said that she will sue towns that don't follow the law.
Well, then the towns, towns have been sued before over things, it's not, it's not the end of the world, I think it's, I think it's something to consider in all reality. Is it worth looking, before we worry about getting sued, maybe we should look at some hardcore data. As how this is really going to affect our infrastructure, the parking, our water supply, the fact that we have, you know.
Okay, sure, um, we have a task force which is doing exactly that.
I go on every single meeting and I am informed of what the task force has gathered to this point. I'm just, I'm just simply saying, it's it seems to go from zero to lawsuit, and I think that there's a lot in between that, so I thank you for listening to my comment. And would just hope that we could put some more perspective on this project as a whole, because. We're not getting a lot of information, the only information is we're gonna get sued by the Attorney General if we don't do that. Instead of let's look at the data that we actually have and how it will affect our town. And opting out, you know, Chris Only himself said in his first mission statement. He was going to look into what opting out would look like for the town, and he's on the planning board, so. I think it's important to consider that aspect, that's all, thank you very much.
Uh. I uh I attended the forums. On Saturday, yeah, there, and I thought there was a lot of information being disseminated then, including. Uh, grant, uh, there was a entire slide of just of all, all all the grants we've received in the last ten years. I think was uh made quite clear, they were not talking five hundred and fifty units at all, okay, uh, so I think that. Uh, this moving target, and we're learning every day something new, and I think we got the the latest and greatest on on Saturday, and. That's still a work in progress, isn't it, Chris?
Still, we'll be working progress for another six months, I mentioned. But yeah, I appreciate your being at the forum, you're helpful, you too, Jim. Um.
Yeah, I wish I could have attended that forum, it was just a Sunday morning at ten, or Saturday rather, and we. A lot of parents have sporting events to attend, and I would have loved to go, actually, so thank you.
But and well, I'm just to that point, a lot of things that you uh just mentioned, I think we're discussing that upon that that forum.
Yeah, all all of the all of the presentation boards, I think, are downstairs, are they not?
They're up here.
They're up here somewhere, they're they're.
They'll be online.
They're they're available and will be online within the next day or so, so. It it is an evolving process, and Chris is managing that, but it's true, every week, the story changes or evolves, I should say, a bit more.
Is there anyone else who wants to speak?
So it looks like Sammy had your hand back up?
Yes, good.
Um, I just wanted to add, I I I also went to that um session um on Saturday, and I think. There, what what I'm, a- a- and I was speaking with people um at the meeting and after the meeting, and I think it's clarity. On the meaning can be very, very confusing, um. It, we we throw around, we have about four hundred units, and we need to have five fifty, but it's really about. The zoning and the way that the zoning is articulated will be able to give us a certain capacity. And yet, I heard other people talking about numbers of units and everything, so I think what this shows is that as we go along the process. I think that um having the information disseminated. And articulated very carefully and clearly will help everybody. Um, and I think that we've heard a lot of things ramping up to this, and we're still not there yet, we don't have the consultant report in and all that, but. I think it's the clarity of the information that will help everybody. So I just wanted to add that to that, just that last um uh discussion going forward. So I just wanted to add that to that, just that last um, uh, discussion going forward.
Thank you.
Uh, Lee. Um, yeah. Hi, Lee Simmons, two nine one, Summer Street. Um, little change of direction. It is just a question, actually maybe two, but that I've kind of wondered about for a long time and it may have been discussed over the years. Uh, when you drive by the transfer station and you drive, I think into Hamilton, you see a very, very, very large field of solar panels. Is that something Manchester has just um, ever considered for our town? I don't mean individual homeowners, but I mean for the town. Or is it the fact that we just don't have the space, uh, which could be the answer? And it may have been something we've discussed a lot and I've just missed it. Um, that's my question. One of them. The other one's just sort of.
So we did investigate putting solar panels out our, our closed landfill. And unfortunately, the um, the slopes are too steep and because you, you can't penetrate the um, the liner. Um, so you can't put a deep pole in, you can only do the uh, the balance approach. And the slopes are too steep for that um, on ours. Uh, we have looked at uh, solar panels on different municipal buildings. Uh, probably the water treatment plant is the most viable. Viable and it's the largest roof area we have. Uh, if, if we replace the roof here at the sewer plant, that might be a potential as well. Uh, those are the two most promising other sites. They're not that large relatively speaking, but, but they're, in terms of building space, they're probably our biggest funds. Um, just the town, because those didn't pan out uh, going forward, we do have a um, contract where we purchase our electricity from a solar farm that's up in, uh, just north of here in Haverhill. Uh, so we are eighty percent of the town's municipal, I should say. Municipal electricity that we use is coming from that solar farm.
Well, that's, yeah, that's good to know. Thank you.
So we do have that.
Okay, thank you. One other quick thing, I think um, at some point, my, my question is basically about retirement community assisted living. I'm pretty old and uh, I've always hoped that we would be able to do something around this town so that I don't have to go out to Route four, one fourteen if I need to. Um, but at some point, I think they were talking about something over where maybe where cell signaling has some bought all that land. Uh, is that, is there any discussion still about assisted living or is that all the land that cell signaling has bought?
Cell signaling has bought all of that land.
Okay, all right.
Still, um, a lot of discussion of senior housing in various forms, which is going on in the planning.
Okay.
We're very aware that each of us is getting older.
Yeah, some of us sooner than later, I guess. I don't know. Thanks. Thank you. Thank you all.
No other questions?
Why don't we take a five minute break and make all these people wait for us? Thank you, everyone who's attended this. Um, we will certainly do it again. I'm not sure we're prepared to face it monthly, but um, and, and I have received comments that it would be nice if this were not at five thirty so the people who don't work in town uh, could join us.
If I may make a comment, I think this was not the first time we've done this and it, I don't believe. And I think it was more better attended. So whatever was done to, I think, promote conversation, not sure that we actually had.
We had people downstairs.
Yeah, that well.
One of these years, but it was several months ago.
Right, several, yeah.
Other, other people know have suggested that we should have a, a lifting tour.
Right, yeah.
And uh, perhaps in small groups, less than a forum, meeting, going someplace to answer questions. Um, and yes.
I just wanted to thank the town employees and Tiffany, you know, for promoting this successfully so people.
How many people logged in or what?
Sarah.
We looked about twenty.
I, I just, when I looked at the agenda and saw the item, it made no sense to me. I had no clue what it was.
It just said open meeting.
Yeah, just said public forum and it didn't say about what. And so other people might have had that same.
Yeah.
Reaction that it, it.
We need to be more quick.
Seeking input or something like that.
The attention was to be, to take questions on any subject.
Right, but it just wasn't, it wasn't listed as the agenda. That's all.
We still have two minutes when we can stand up.
I couldn't help but notice.
Yes. That's fun.
Oh, yeah.
You wish.
So the greenscape flyers. The greenscape flyers.
One beaver dam and then three anthill. I have no clue.
I got rid of some. Yeah, I got rid of it, but I have started. Mr. Sitting there, there were like.
Who said, oh, we want.
I have about how many you need?
Took it all down.
Two thousand. I think it's. I care.
I, I need to, I need to get them. We have a meeting.
Is it data ZB if they wanted to?
On Friday, the senior source is a topic is a bill. I love that and I just need to know where they are. I told them I, I knew who to talk to. Because we'd have to make arrangements.
It's like a forty five trailer.
This time to do that. Uh, yeah. Well, these are, these were. Well, I got the green out. The copy's sprayed. It's all laid out. There are other sources.
That better, you switch chairs? Happy, you're happy.
I suspect we were never that much below a hundred percent. That's not like that better. That's just the best, that's inconvenient for you.
Okay, we convening. Um. Uh, item on the agenda is Affordable Housing Trust. Nice to hear housing authority update.
Yeah, why don't I take the lead? Thank you for um, bringing some time aside. My name is John Foyerbach. I'm the Chair of the Affordable Housing Trust. And I come here speaking on behalf of the Affordable Housing Trust, but also the Manchester Housing Authority. And the purpose of this visit here tonight is a continuation of our engagement with the select board. You guys all know that, you know, we take a step forward, we're doing it uh, in consultation with uh, important committees and boards such as the select board. Um, and specifically, I want to just talk about um, the request for proposal process, where we are right now, the status of that. And when we talk about the development plan of this housing authority and the Affordable Housing Trust, we're talking about Newport Park, we're talking about the plains, we're talking about loading place. At one point in time, we had Pleasant Street on the table and we took it off and, um, but um, uh, as background, we tried to solicit developers under a competitive request for proposal on multiple occasions. Both efforts failed notwithstanding are great efforts. And, and also the support we showed in the request for proposal, the non-binding uh, town vote in November of twenty twenty one. You okay with that? Affordable housing community, which always does this to you. You know, so. So we. So we, so we did some polling of possible development partners about why there was no response to the RFP. And there, and it basically led us to change course and go to a request for qualifications. We're not actually seeking to select a developer, but we're seeking to engage with knowledgeable developers who would work with us, go over our current development plan, see whether or not it's feasible. What are some improvements? We did that in the spirit of um, then sitting, coming back amongst ourselves, the housing authority and the Affordable Housing Trust to relook at our plan in hopes of moving forward with the competitive request for proposal in the future. We had the new date in August, we received one application from the uh, preservation of affordable housing. Although it's one, folks might think, oh my God, it's this, I can't believe only got one. We feel quite fortunate because they are a Boston-based developer, but they're involved in, I think, twelve or thirteen communities throughout the United States. A very, very influential and, and important developer. A- a- as well as they have experience in working with public housing authorities. The type of work and the type of engagement we're talking about a developer having with the PHA, Manchester Housing Authority, they're doing that in at least three, four neighborhoods and four other cities. Uh, Somerville, Boston, one in St. Louis, there's one in DC. So they bring some very incredible on-the-ground experience that we benefit from. Before we go any further, I just want to clarify for the select board as well as for those who are listening at home. When we talk about a request for qualifications and we're talking about TOA as the applicant, we're not talking about a developer at this time. An RFQ is quite different than an RFP. RFQ is really sort of loosey goosey. Uh, we made it clear in our RFP, we want to engage with you, couple of meetings, help us versus a request for proposal where it's an actual um, legal process where we're seeking to select a developer. Our plan now is to work with TOA. Engage with them, have some back and forth on what their thoughts on our, on our, uh, our plan, improvements, so that we can then reconvene and issue a request for proposal at a later date where we would be in a better position to actually select a developer. We went, we met with TOA, we, uh, Housing Authority and um, Affordable Housing Trust probably about three or four weeks ago. It was the first time we met with them. They introduced themselves at a very tight PowerPoint, talked about the projects they worked on. They uh, they, they talked about their understanding of our current development plan. And they sort of talked about areas where they would suggest um, I guess, the challenges that we would face, challenges that any developer would face. Um, so the, the purpose here is the, the two main takeaways. And I, I'm speaking on behalf of the Housing Authority and other fellow Affordable Housing Trust members here. So feel free to chime in. My two main, three main takeaways. One, we are really fortunate to have a very, very capable and experienced applicant to help us. I think that bodes well as we plan to meet with them going forward. We're going to get some great knowledge from them and it will help us moving forward. Second takeaway is that they, but after looking at some of the sites, specifically Newport and a little bit of the plains, they said there's some development challenges, probably more so in Newport Park. And when you go into Newport Park, you go in that back left. Everyone knows it's, it's a sort of a tricky slope and there's some water back there. They called into question the feasibility of actually having a large footprint that, that could create the housing that we anticipate in our current proof of concept plan. That was the first thing. And then the second, they said, our plan really hinges on units. We have to have the one-to-one match for all the public housing authority um, sites, the units. I, I believe we have eighty-four there. When you add up what we were proposing in Newport Park, um, the plains and loading place, we're about, I think, fifty or sixty. Our understanding by including Pleasant Street, that brings in approximate thirty more. That gets us to a point of um, enough units that would attract the developer. TOA mentioned that right now in our current plan, they feel there's insufficient density and number of units that would call into question the economic viability. The elephant in the room at that meeting is what is the status of Pleasant Street? I think we all said amongst ourselves that if we had that, that could provide an economic engine to help finance the development plan. But also it would help finance any plan we have for rehabilitating the current units. Again, because what we've been talking about is new construction at the public housing sites. And to the extent possible and feasible is to then have a spin-off and create rehabilitation opportunities in the housing authority sites. So before I pause and have some comments, I, I, I just wanted to emphasize, I, I know there has been back and forth on Pleasant Street. Um, is it in the plan? Can we include it in the plan? Is it too presumptuous to have it in the plan just given the situation with siding? Um, but we heard firsthand from TOA that, that would be an incredibly important um, land area to help us with our plan. And I say that in the context of, we all know what's going on in the town and the support for trying to manage the, our ability to have affordable units so that we could get close, one, meet a great need of community affordable housing in the town, but also get closer to our ten percent. Um, what we've, what we've found out from TOA is by not having a site such as the Pleasant Street, it really makes it a very difficult challenge for our current plan right now. And I, I just want to stop at that and give anyone else who might want to comment.
Before. Um, is there? Are there questions from the board at this point?
Yeah, I just need a, a clarification, John. Early on, you said you need a number of units that is equal to the number of units that exist, which is eighty-four. So is, is eighty-four some magic number or they're really saying we need to build eighty-four units to make the economics work?
Didn't they say maybe more than eighty-four?
All right, but.
He said either a one or two-to-one match in order to make it economic.
All right, is, are they talking about a two-to-one match? In other words, is the number of existing units key or they just know, no, we gotta have about ninety units to make the math work here?
Rules.
Oh, they got rules. All right, I, I need to.
John, one of the things that you have to understand about this is that the state is providing subsidy to operate these units. But the subsidy is very, very small. And so what the housing authorities try to operate on, the rents are actually being paid by the tenants, which is one-third of their monthly income is rent, which is probably a sort of a third, whichever.
Yeah, anything, yeah.
Yeah, but it's probably a couple hundred bucks. Well, it's pretty tough to run an apartment complex on a couple hundred bucks of rent per month per unit. And that's why it's very important to try to expand beyond just these subsidized units and create a, a block of affordable units that can generate more income from rent. So you're not just paying three hundred bucks and paying eight hundred, nine hundred less a month or whatever it's going to be. To provide the, the cash flow they need to. To provide the 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 cash flow they need to pay debt and the cost of what these new units are.
Understood. So right now, we have eighty-four units, and they say we need to have at least eighty or ninety units. If we had only fifty units, they would have said we need at least fifty units, because there's a, that's that's the rule. More or less. Okay, I understand. Wanted to know where that number was coming from.
So we just wanted to take a moment to bring this to your attention, because we know you're having important discussions. Regarding the use of Pleasant Street. And we didn't want you to go into that type of discussion without hearing from us what we're hearing from. Our RFQ applicant.
Anyone else who would like to speak?
Can I just say one other thing here about this? It doesn't have to be necessarily Pleasant Street. The town could identify another people land in the past, I know back in the early nineties, there was. A plan to put affordable housing around Moses, the Moses Hill stamp. If maybe that's another way we could do this, I don't know. You know, you need to think a little bit outside the box, and you know the town's got other. Needs and it has to. Take more time, so. Kind of a little bit of balance.
Certainly for me, the need to deal with. Lack of affordable housing is a pretty major consideration. Question?
Yes. So uh how large of a lot would be needed in order to. Sweeten the pot to make it economically viable for a developer? We keep talking Pleasant Street, but how much acreage?
We're talking about eighteen units per acre. Oh, my God.
Yeah, fifteen to eighteen units in that term, which is.
So how many acres would we need? Five or six over and above Newport Park, et cetera, existing footprint. Okay.
Anyone?
Uh yeah, Sheila Del too, very retro. I apologize for being um. When you talked about Pleasant Street, initially the the conversation was about building market rate housing there, right? And. I'm not sure now, it sounds like you're talking about having affordable housing there, or or the market rate was gonna be, you know, one percentage of small. Or.
I don't wanna speak for the select board, but we got the indication that that really shouldn't be something that we should reference in our RFQ. Correct me if I'm wrong, and the reason why is because we've been given indication that. There's other public purpose that could be used on Pleasant Street, so for that reason. We didn't include reference in our RFQ. We did include reference, we said.
I said wasn't her question, John. She's asking, are we talking the?
Does the developer need this market rate housing to offset their?
I I think that's something that would be to to be determined, but I think market rate housing is, would be an option. Because the. The option of that would be. We're getting cash flow perhaps, or we're getting some acquisition that could then be used to support what what Chris is saying, to support. Um the. The very difficult operating situation that the current Housing Authority units have, and it would be an engine to hopefully. Help with the rehab. We have a lot of units.
So it was my understanding, we probably, you probably want to do this as a front forty B. We're unable to, because if we're adding more market rate units to the inventory, and you've spoken to this before.
We don't wanna make it harder.
The delta becomes bigger, okay? If we do a forty B all rental, all those units would count as part of the uh.
I I think the challenge is is because. Of the the structure through the state. That we need to get the state to buy in and hopefully provide some money to get it off their wheels. And into a developers.
Anne, if I may.
Oh, thank you. I'm sorry, I I forgot that you were going to be remote.
Yeah.
There's my question. Go ahead.
Hi, um I wanted to know, ask John, and I know we had um talked about this before. But are we able to modify the footprints that are on our current. Affordable housing land and um either add more buildings or go up higher? On those? I'm not saying in lieu of other properties, but in addition to. Thank you.
I interpret that to mean our current plan, or are you referring to the current buildings?
Uh current buildings, current buildings and current land. For example, can we look at Newport Park and add more buildings? Or add on to the current buildings in addition to um. Building on other property. In other words, can we sweeten that pot anymore?
I think that has been part of um what we've been talking about. Uh we looked. At Newport Park pretty carefully, as John said earlier, it's um it's difficult land. Um up back, there's an intermittent stream and there's um conservation issues and it uh. Obviously goes right up the hill there. Um probably the plains has more physical area. Uh I think was sort of part of what we were looking at, so maybe. Um add some, some um. More housing up in there, more, that would be affordable housing, would be senior housing.
And I think that's one of the reasons why we're working with Poa, is it is to have them give us ideas as to what we can do. Reasonably fine, it's financially feasible.
Definitely, actually, a loading place, so um we we're, there's now family housing, our intention was definitely a more. Uh family housing in it. Um let me just see if I can summarize. Newport Park looks difficult to build, so it's unlikely that we are able to put new buildings there.
At our, at our current projection, the the proof of concept plan had was looking at approximately eighteen units. What we're hearing from Poa is that might be ambitious.
Eighteen new.
Eighteen new, a building that would have eighteen new units.
At Newport?
Yes.
And the plains?
Plains, they are a proof of concept, we were looking at approximately twenty-six. They. I agree with Gretchen, that I think that is probably. A promising site, the only issue that they raised is that, we're looking at like a, if you go to the back of a plane, so I think it's where the community center is.
Yes.
That could be replaced with a three-story, maybe four-story multifamily building. It seems to me that that would work out. They only said, you know, if you look behind there in the back, there's, there's some, there's some residents who. Might have some comment on on.
No, no, her, Karen, that's right.
And and loading place road, which is the third location, you expect more family housing there.
Our our proof of concept plan, again, this is all very preliminary, hasn't really been, but they were looking at six duplexes totaling. Twelve units, so it'd be like a side-by-side, side-by-side. Currently, right now, we have. Four three-bedroom rentals. That's a three-point-two acres there. And but we have some whatland issues.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um I interrupt you, Sheila, I'm sorry.
Okay, that was a good discussion. Um what I take from this, which really was my original line of questioning was. To take us. The word on the street, take a slice of Powderhouse Hill. Seems abundantly premature right now to to any of this discussion, and I I I. It would seem to involve uh. To involve Newport Park most likely, but is that part of your, is your concept involved needing any of Powderhouse Hill to execute?
Our current plan doesn't in include that.
This plan that you.
The proof of concept that we looked at, it didn't include it, and when we met with. Um Poa recently, we we were talking about that.
But Steve Yang did come and make a proposal to us. Which we all said we would take into consideration, and that was to swap. Piece of land that's part of Newport Park. For another part of Powderhouse Hill. Now, we said we don't know if that's legally possible or whatever, and so. It was left and he was gonna go back and do some research and then come back and tell us.
These are the two conversations I'm trying to get in sync, because I had part of it with Steve today, so.
But I think that even what Steve was talking about was not us taking any part of. Our house sale out and back, because he was talking about us getting more furniture on. I'm sure, yeah, and them getting more out of it, so I don't, I really don't think we have anything to do anything.
And that was. I wanna say, to use the word preliminary on this conversation is almost. Because we're not being tied to the word preliminary.
Preliminary is premature.
It was just brought to our attention.
Right, good idea.
We're all here, we said, Steve, why don't you check into it and get back to us? For all we know, it's like, hey, red light. Don't even consider it. But if he comes back and says, you know, it seems like there's a legal possibility, then, you know, we are all about engagement. And we we just will will look at it at that point.
I think there's Martian stream involved in this discussion, which they they would have an interest in protecting swapping for a piece of us.
That's what we.
Yeah, yeah, which is more. Thought. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else want to? Really? Nothing from up front?
No, John has outlined the issues, I think eloquently and succinctly, and I think there's. Matter of the Pleasant Street property and where it fits in the facilities plan that is coming to fruition and. Just what's gonna, what can happen with that property.
Or a few acres somewhere.
Or a few acres somewhere, yes, that I mean, yes.
How big is the Pleasant Street?
We said we need like.
Seven acres.
Seven acres.
Seven acres.
We know three acres of development.
Yeah.
Only three acres.
You go back there and it it's like water in like.
Only three developable acres on Pleasant Street.
Towards the from, it can be more dense now, into the FBR as far as. And so you know, then, usually, if you're going a seven-acre developable site. Right, that allows X amount of units. And then, I mean, of the entire site is seven acres, you're only gonna build on three, you take the entire seven acres as part of your corner.
Yeah, can almost be seen as like a planned unit development.
I think the real issue is gonna be what it was.
I also think of how dirty it is, do we have, we wouldn't even know about that.
I I guess I would ask, is there a. Timeline for the facilities? Uh yes, project study to. Come to fruition and be discussed and bring some decisions to the town.
We asked for some specific revisions. Um to what they presented us. And I expect.
That'll be ready for your next meeting.
They'll be ready for our next meeting, we will discuss it. I think probably a specific discussion of of the Pleasant Street property. Um should be a separate agenda item at a future meeting rather than. Rather than tied in, just so the people know that we're specifically talking about that.
Me too. When do you talk to Poa next?
Uh we have a date set, I think, for. We have a placeholder, I think, right, in three weeks, but we really said we'd get back to them, we wanted to have this opportunity. To share this with you, but also get comments from you. But. I think. Probably within three weeks. We just don't wanna meet with them to just meet. We want them to have a definable task. For example, we can say, why don't you provide a density build-out? Assuming a certain parcel. I think we may have left it.
They were gonna look at it without a parcel.
Without, yeah, I was gonna say, reduce our plan, had certain assumptions, now take out one of the assumptions. Come forward with a, a, you know, a seat of the pants.
And our meeting was.
When you say take out one of the assumptions, are you talking about Pleasant Street assumption? So, okay, what is this? So how does that project, can it stand alone just the way it is? Because this facility plan is coming down the pipe in the next week or so. But the disposition of the Pleasant Street space is not number one on the list there. And the decision as to what's gonna happen with that is probably a little bit further down.
Well. Yes, we will see, um because. I think what the facilities plan is suggesting for that location is a public safety building. And. We need to weigh the importance of a public safety building. Um versus dealing with affordable housing problem. And. So I think we need to look at the final facilities. And discuss it, um and. So a month maybe before Christmas.
It's coming soon.
Greg, is there anything else we need to?
No, so I I guess in terms of a timeline, um. What would be most helpful to you folks?
Yesterday.
We had a feeling you were gonna say.
Next week.
So, so do the better.
Yeah, I mean, this is a project that's been swirling and, I don't know, are we in there three?
I would keep going.
Oh, yeah, see, right, and I I mean, I, I I fully respect the process that's necessary and the time. That's necessary to make these kinds of decisions. But we have been at this quite a while, probably three years, although. Four or five most recent, you know, and it clearly is a. It does still feel like there is appetite in the community. Um and I hope that appetite never wins. But I, it's incumbent on us to get going.
And can I say the obvious, which is every affordable unit we create, it's us closer to the SHI. This is a great way of producing affordable.
Particularly if it's done as as a friendly forty B, so that. The affordable units count.
Yes.
And that we don't offset it with market rate.
No, no, the market rate, market rate counts. Market rate, you, in a forty B, market rate rental units count toward the affordable house, toward the.
I know, but we have other projects on the. Town blotter, huge numbers of market rate, so.
Yeah.
I just wanna keep that formula.
But most of us, we get the control and design.
Yes.
So you're willing, you you mentioned, you know, it doesn't have to be pleasant, but you need five, five or six acres, do you, do you think about where? Do you have a preferred location for the line of six or?
Great, the only thing that we're mindful of is right from the moment you were established, we talked about our mission. We want to be as close, we wanna be walkable as a bird, you wanna include residents in the life and the blood of the town. You know, so a central location has always been important to us. That said, look where we are now, we're. So anything would be important to to consider.
We should not take anything off the table, any good suggestion off the table, walkability is important, but at this point, it may be a nice to have. As opposed to a must-have.
Is it helpful? Should we keep this like an open, you know, in a. Should we keep this like an open, you know, and come back in a couple of months after we meet with Boa, just so to keep you.
Oh, yes, please. We're not going away.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Would you pause about PFA's?
PFAS, yes, would love to. So I'll start wherever you guys would like, in terms of, uh, I'm sure you saw the right up my head in the cricket, uh, which kind of goes at things from my perspective. There's been other uh, voices on the topic that I'm happy to discuss, but I can start wherever you'd like, or we can.
So they had your FAQ's.
Yep. Um, yeah, so I mean, you know, uh, there's some pretty big numbers in there. I don't know if that's something you guys would like to discuss, uh, but in general, um, you know, PFAS is everywhere, said everything, our water supply is no different. Um, you know, we've stopped short of trying to identify exactly where or has been able to, if you wanna do, where these things came from. So that's, that's where we're starting, where we're starting at. Um, you know, this is something that started from my perspective, four or five years ago at the state level. Uh, state did pass an MCL that, you know, we had been under.
MCL.
Uh, maximum contaminant limit, so you know, we need to be under the maximum. Uh, and we have been, uh, EPA has said that, you know, out of, you know, they're not consulting with the state of Massachusetts. They're saying, you know, we have our own experts and we've, you know, looked at the data and we think it should be lower. Um, and so that's, you know, what they've proposed, but that will not be promulgated until probably the end of the year. Uh, at which time we would, uh, Massachusetts would have no choice but to adopt the lower of the standards. Uh, they could also decide to go even lower if they wanted to, you know, go in that direction. Um, and so that's, you know, that's what we've been dealing with, uh, from my perspective for at least four or five years now. And it's just now starting to come to a head. And so, you know, from my point of view, from the town's point of view, you know, we've been monitoring this, we've been trying to keep up on all the latest articles and, you know, discussions on this topic. And, uh, we, you know, that's what we've been doing. Um, and beyond that, we said, if if we do need to get to a point, or if the town would like, or if there's any other reason within, you know, these kind of articles and all the education that's going on in this topic. You know, how are we gonna, how are we gonna meet it? How are we gonna treat for it? How are we gonna, what are we going to do? And so we've been working on that for several years as well. Um, you know, first it started with the well, which is higher than the pond. Um, so what, as we've done that, um, you know, we've always thought that we were probably likely on a long enough timeline, uh, going to have to treat at the well no matter what. Um, and so that's what we thought we were going to do. Um, we have a plan for that. We know what it will cost and how we will do it. Um, we do need to do some other studies, the bench scale and pilot scale testing, which um, you know, to get into the details on that just a little bit is, you know, we need to test our water. So what what else is in our water? What, um, you know, needs to come out before the treatment for the PFAS or vice versa? And so, you know, as we did that for the well specifically, that water chemistry uh, needs to take out the iron and magnes, which is, you know, very common, obviously, in groundwater wells. Um, so that is a separate process from the process that actually takes out the PFAS. And so what you get is vessels that will take out the iron and magnes. That's the green sand, which there are several different kinds of green sand. So green sand is kind of like the, the, you know, Google as a search engine type, you know, like that kind of thing. Uh, you know, Saran wrap versus, you know, plain wrapping, that kind of thing. So we have many types of uh, green sand that we need to evaluate, which will take out our specific, because there's many forms of iron and magnes, we need to take out our specific iron magnes. So one type of green sand might work better to do that than another. So gets through that, we've taken out all the green, uh, the, all the iron magnes. Now we have to take out the actual PFAS, so which, there's hundreds of constituents of PFAS, the most common, or PFOS, or POFO, or POFS, and POFA. Um, those are actually the ones that are identified in the EPA regs if if they get there. Um, and so, um, you know, depending on what those constituents are, we might want a different type of granular activated carbon. Um, you know, there's different manufacturers of these things that have slightly different surface areas and loading rates and backwash interval, you know, all these types of engineering, you know, things have to go into the decisions that we make. And so that's where the bench scale and the pilot scale testing comes in. Um, so that is something that we will have to do in the, you know, very short term. Um, I I'm getting a proposal on that probably in the next week or two. Um, to do not only Lincoln Street, but since we're gonna have that equipment in town, we're gonna be paying for those labs and those shipping costs. Might as well also do the same testing at Gravelly Pond. Um, and then there's another hairball theory that we have that maybe it's actually better for us to build a big pipe that goes from Lincoln Street up to Gravelly Pond, and we just do all of that treatment at Gravelly Pond and then pump it back into the distribution system. So that's another kind of thing, and that has a much bigger lifecycle cost analysis that we have to perform on, you know, these intervals for changing out the media and backwashing and energy consumption and there's actual chemicals that we put in, you know, ahead of this and behind that, you know, there's a lot that goes into it. This is all part of the bench scale pilot scale testing. We need to get all that information before we, you know, spend twenty something million dollars on this treatment. So you know, it's money well spent, it's money that has to be spent, and, you know, we need to do it sooner rather than later, but so that, from my perspective, is kind of where we're at now, where we're gonna be going, and then it does seem, once again, it's just the one thing. When EPA passes their reg, whatever it ends up being, if it's a little bit lesser, a little bit more than what they proposed, we'll probably have three or four years to come into compliance with that MCL. So we will potentially be over that MCL until we get this treatment installed. But that is kind of anticipated as EPA is drafting the reg and enforcing it. So, sorry.
Um. My first question is, you say you have to, you have to treat water um, as it is. And I gather the Lincoln Street well water is quite different with Gravelly Pond water. What happens if you put, mix the two together?
So again, it's, it's the same exercise. We need to do the bench scale and pilot scale testing to know exactly. But I mean, we can do a mass balance for all these things, so we'll have a good idea.
So you could do one round of testing that would cover the possibility of two separate treatments and a combined treatment.
Yeah, I mean, there's an incremental additional charge, if you will, for that, but it's something that we're, there is a certain amount of, you know, uh, savings from doing it all at once rather than doing three separate.
And that's what you're planning to do.
Yep.
Okay. Oh. Something else that's gone, but anyone else, please?
Um, just to put that, so you've outlined a lot of good things that are in process. Can you clarify the timeline? So all this testing, when's that gonna be completed? So that the residents will have a better understanding about, um, you know, when to kind of reengage and and look at the analysis and when do we anticipate completing that test?
It's a great question. Um, so we will start commence that testing as soon as possible. Like, I need to get the proposal, then we need to get the equipment, you know, it's trailer mounted equipment that'll be on site and then, you know, send, send samples of our water, you know.
Do you need money now?
Um, so I I need to see what the final number is, but I think we have enough ARPA funds, uh, to cover it now. You know, it'll be a couple hundred thousand dollars, but I think we have roughly that left, so uh, you know, Greg and I will talk, well, you know, we need to go to a fall time meeting, but I think.
The fall time meeting is pretty close.
I know, I know, yeah. I I will have it, I I hope this week, if not, uh, I was promised I would have it by Halloween. But, um, that would be too late for a fall time meeting probably, but yeah, um, either way, um, so I'll, I will get back to you on that. I don't have that answer tonight. But the timeline question. Um, you know, it will be ongoing. Uh, we will get information sooner rather than later. However, we do have seasonal differences in our water. And so before we can spend hundred, tens of millions of dollars on this stuff, we are going to want that seasonal and DP will actually probably require it.
The answer might be, it's gonna take us a year.
Might take us about a year.
Complete the test.
To complete. We will have intermittent, you know, discussions about it. We will post the results. We will, you know, I will give a letter to the cricket or otherwise, um, you know, saying where we're at, but um, yeah, that's, it's, it's gonna take at least that long to get the final numbers, um, but they'll be sort of periodic.
Okay, so if you start this fall, are we starting this fall?
Yeah, I mean. Well, it's.
We're in fall right now, so I'm like, within the next couple of months to begin to start, okay? So let's say we go through all of this, you know, all of twenty twenty four, calendar year twenty twenty four. And while we're in the middle of the budgeting process for fiscal year twenty six. That's what we would be targeting for coming back to the residents with. Here's what we think we're gonna need.
Yep, for construction.
For construction.
Yep. Um, you know, there, again, if I will get the LCCA before, you know, this, like, before Halloween.
LCCA.
Uh, so lifecycle cost analysis of, you know, the kind of uh, I, you know, of the, of the kind of vetting out at a more detailed level, the cost that we will incur over the life of the project. Um, so I will get that in the next month, and that will inform, you know, doing a pipe from Lincoln Street up to that doesn't change. So we might be able to take that on in FY twenty five versus FY twenty six. So those construction dollars might be able to be moved around sooner rather than later, and that's a part of that exercise. Um, but that's, yeah, what we anticipate in terms of the pilot.
How's the development in quality of pipe performance?
Better than it was two years ago, uh, but yeah, it's, it's still, you know, cost premium, you know, I think that's more now going away from the materials aspects of it more and just the, uh, inflation pressures on wages and, you know, that kind of thing, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, uh, I mean, have you pretty much decided that it's gotta be piping Lincoln Street up to Gravelly as opposed to processing water in site two? Both places?
So I have not come to that conclusion here. It, the, in terms of capital expenditures.
Yeah.
It would be a little bit more expensive, believe it or not, to install that pipe. But if we are replacing media at two separate locations at twice the frequency over the course of twenty five years, it might actually be that uh, the pipe is cheaper over the twenty five years. Um, so that is, so I have not convinced myself that on the financial end of things, that that is the best way to go. However, um, there are other intangible, non-financial benefits of maintaining Lincoln Street as its own, um, pumping source into the distribution system versus everything going through Gravelly Pond and vice versa. So it's, it's a pretty in-depth analysis that we're trying to.
There's operational trade-offs, that's financial trade-offs.
So I'm still not a hundred percent sure over the course of twenty five years, which is, which way the financial will go. However, um, you know, the operational is in favor more of actually maintaining Lincoln Street as its own treatment source.
Right, and your, your contaminant mass balance load is half of what it would otherwise be approximately for each location. So you're not throwing out as much stuff as frequently in in total you are, but.
Yeah, yeah, this location, yeah.
All right, a lot of factors going in there, money of which is only one.
Yep. Currently, how our waters uh, compared to other, uh, so we, based on what I've been. Uh, I, we're certainly in no more trouble than anybody else. We're, we're actually, you know, under the current MCL, which is good. There are several that in, especially in Massachusetts, that are, are above the MCL, and they're treating now or they're, you know. Yeah, oh yeah, yeah, um, we would, we'd be changing the, you know, tune for sure. Um, so, and it, and it, those those sources that were over the, the current MCL, you know, they were immediately thrown into with no prior knowledge, you know, just do a twenty million dollar treatment pipe project or, you know, pipeline or whatever, or just take your wells offline. We are not there. We are working through the kind of minutia of the details, and we will get to a point where we know exactly what we're gonna do um, before the MCL changes. Um, you know, that being said, if something crazy gets written into that last MCL, then I might, you know, walk this back a little bit, but we are trying. Um, in terms of other communities, so like, for instance, I'm, I live in Wenham, I'm on the water commission in Wenham. Our well, we have wells that are similar to Lincoln Street. They are about the similar amount of PFAS, by the way. So they're roughly, uh, you know, above ten but under twenty. Um, so we're not currently considering treatment, but if these MCLs that EPA is proposing, then we will be going through that process. Um, so I would say, um, you know, and there's no redundant source in Wenham, and there's no, you know, it will be, this is what you do. Um, so that, you know, that, that's kind of a real thing. Um, you know, the, the figure so MWRA, for example, all the communities that are on MWRA, they do not have to, they will be under the MCL. Um, I'm not sure um, how they manage to do that, but that's what I hear. Um, I guess the quadrant is well, well protected, uh, so there's that. Um, so, yeah, who else? Um, uh, yeah, so that's, you know, that's, you know, I think, and then, so this, this treatment process that actually removes the PFAS is granular activated carbon. That is not a new technology. That is not something that, you know, might work or whatever. Like, that's something that people use for various reasons in water treatment all the time. And so Hamilton, for instance, probably has PFAS in their wells, but they already have GAK, so they don't have a corresponding upgrade to make. Um, so that's kind of another end of the spectrum, is they kind of let know, you know, that they already have that treatment.
So I think it's worth just reiterating the kind of numbers we're
maximized.
Dealing with here, so parts per trillion are extremely, extremely small, and I think you had in your, your FAQ, uh, one second, thirty one thousand, some odd years.
It's insane.
Uh, we're, we're talking about quantities that are extremely difficult to even detect. Um, so let's say our water had, had zero. Um, I would venture to say that all of us would continue to put PFAS into our bodies because of all the other sources. So we have to remember that water is not the sole source of of this contaminant.
Uh, and so to kind of go on that point is like, when, when the state first initially came out with their regs for managing under twenty parts per trillion. Um, you know, we, we had very big concerns on the, on the water industry side that, like, Teflon tape that you put on every single plumbing fixture in your, you know, if we had it in our well or at the treatment plant, but also in your homes and everywhere else, that is on that. And so that is not counted in the, you know, what we're trying to deal with. Uh, we immediately went back and retrofitted all of our taps and all of the things that are in the, either the pond facility or the, uh, well, and removed all the Teflon tape, which you can imagine, like, it was not something we planned on doing or whatever, but that would have added PFAS to the water. You know, we were, you know, unknowingly doing. Uh, there's also protocols in the testing itself where our guys that are taking this out, I, I'm not kidding when I say that, are not allowed to wear deodorant. They're not allowed to wet, uh, eat certain consumable product, you know, like fast food wrappers and stuff like that, like, don't touch it.
They can't wear skin mask there.
Yeah, use the. Uh, no, no, no certain soaps and stuff like that. So like, it's, it's very much, uh, something they have to consider when they're doing the test. Um, is the cross contamination, but. Um.
Yeah. You know, if you have Teflon pans, you're getting more than what our water is providing you. So it's just, I don't say that to scare, I just put it in the context of of what we're dealing with here.
Yeah, um, and that's the other thing, is it's not really regulated at the, you know, the bottled water, at the uh, food, you know, consumable, you know, products, it's, it's not, it's very much.
But your, your FAQ said that you tested what, felt water that had been filtered. Was this is true way, a, a home filtration system?
Yeah, so that was the other thing that, you know, was we were working on at the task force level, um, that, you know, it seems like everybody's trying to latch on to the PFAS craze, and they're coming out with a new product that may or may not be effective at certain places, but again, they're not doing the piloting testing, they're not doing the state lab testing that we are doing. And so we're, I, you know, said, all right, we'll buy one. So we bought one, we brought it up, we actually ran uh, our filter or our, you know, water as we tested, we put one tap or one sample into a bottle that went to the lab, and this is Manchester sample for the month. We put another one through their filter into their pitcher, and poured that into a sample bottle, we sent that one off. And, uh, they actually wanted us to send that sample back to their lab, which we did, but we also sent it to our state certified lab. And there, there was no measurable difference in the, you know, quantities that they were measuring on, you know, from this, from the sample that we sent for our test, to the sample that went through their filter, there was no difference. And actually, the one that we sent them, they actually reversed the numbers, so it was, it looked like the, the one that went through their pitcher created more PFAS. Like, they, they, we assumed that, that when they reported it back to us, it looked like it was creating PFAS, which maybe it was something to do with their cross contamination in their lab equipment, like, so this is the, the level. maybe it was something to do with their cross contamination in their lab equipment, like, so this is the, the level of kind of nuance in all of these things, and it's just impossible to say.
These assays, at, at a parts per trillion, I, I gotta believe the reproducibility is. Put it through, you get number four. You don't like that number? Let's put it through again. You get sticks.
Yeah, so we actually sent our samples to multiple labs because there's only two in the state and the testing is new for them and the parts per trillion is, you know, new for them. And most of the stuff we test for is milligrams per liter, not, which is, you know.
Right.
PP. Uh, so, you know, it's part of a million, there's, so that's, it's just not even in the same ballpark. Um. Yeah, and so, and then that's the other thing is these, the testing labs and the, you know, the methods for testing. Certain numbers get thrown out if they, because they're not statistically significant and stuff like that. So that's another reason why I see the kind of noise in the numbers. But if you're going from, if that noise, or we measure, you know, six, six different PFAS components, if that noise is in the wrong direction, so you don't get to throw out those samples you have to, are now additive, you know, you can get to twenty pretty quick. And that's, you know, that's what happens.
Number two, um, is there anybody online?
I don't see any hands up.
Um, so I guess my, my message is, you know, we're working on it. I think we've, we've been ahead of this issue all throughout. This is something that I've been dealing with, you know, on a professional level before I was looking at it from Manchester. We are certainly in a better position than some of our other surrounding communities, but, you know, everybody's in the same boat.
Are, are they all, when you say all of the same boat, you said, well, Wenham, you have a front row seated, Wenham, they're about the same numbers. And if you look at the surrounding communities, I, I, you know, we're all kind of, I think that's one, I think Essex doesn't have any or something.
Yeah, I'm not sure how they pulled that off either, but.
We're, we're, in general, we all have not big issues, but issues.
Yeah. I think.
They're not big issues, but they're really expensive issues.
Yeah, of course.
That's a better way of saying it, I think.
So I do have a hand up of Allison Anhold White, is her hand up on?
Yeah. Hi, um, hi, Allison Anhold White, nine Spirok Hill. Um, I just have a couple of questions for Chuck. Um. I'm wondering, uh, given the worldwide anxiety about PFAS in general, uh, is there some way in which the manufacturers are going to be restricted and or check, they're having their processes changed so that the production of PFAS will decrease over time? And if we're investing, you know, little towns are investing a large amount of money and mitigating PFAS, you know, would that ultimately be reduced to the point where it's not such an issue anymore?
I'm not sure I get the last part of that, but.
Well, I just mean, uh, if, if the manufacturer of the Teflon and the firefighting equipment, all those things are uh obliged or made to not use that material any longer, is that going to change the amount of PFAS ending up in our water supply?
Um, so potentially, I, I would say, you know, these things are, as you know, are called forever chemicals, and so the, what's there will remain there until it's, you know, moved, uh, to the next, uh, to the next plot. Um, so I, I do think that, you know, I think it already is restricted at some level as being manufactured in the United States, but, you know, anything that comes from overseas could contain it. Um, there's certainly, you know, still uses. Um, so, you know, I think that's the thing. I think they are you know, being held responsible in sort of the litigation, you know, all PFAS, um, manufacturers, you know, will need to pay something, but it's certainly not gonna be enough.
Yeah. And the other question is, um, after you've filtered out the PFAS, uh, where does the waste material go?
Yeah, so unfortunately, that's still kind of, uh, up in the air. I mean, I think ultimately it will be, uh, incinerated or landfillled, um, hopefully in a live landfill that, you know, is not leaching.
Right. Otherwise, just goes, goes around again, right?
And, and yeah, and honestly, incineration is not necessarily, you know, conventional incineration is probably not hot enough to destroy the PFAS either. Um, so that's, that's kind of the next phase of this. We are, you know, our current permit, uh, for our wastewater treatment plant, you will start to have to test it. And so the question will be, at what point do they say, you no longer need to test it, you need to treat for it? Um, so that's, you know, something else that might be added. Uh, of course, if we're treating it on the water side down to zero, then the only additive between there and the wastewater plant is the other consumables, you know, or what, you know, areas where that would come back into the wastewater stream. Uh, it's a human interaction. So, um, yeah, it's definitely, uh, something that, and that's, I think, most of the more promising technologies that I see for treatment are not necessarily in water treatment, but actually in destruction of the contained media. Um, and, you know, how, how we deal with that.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much for the question. Not as much to you as we're going to tonight.
Right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, if you had any other questions, please, uh, stop by or, um, line back. On to the next one.
Thank you very much. Okay, the next thing is the special town meeting board. And. We need to close that by October thirtieth.
The thirtieth is the, yeah, yeah, that's the drop dead date. So I was suggesting, uh, you know, have your discussion tonight, we, we, we advanced, uh, items that you want. Um, the planning board has a, a hearing on, on Monday, the twenty third. And so, uh, that will be determined as to whether they have a, an article ready, you know, as well. Uh, and so I would suggest that you, you hold a special town, a special select board meeting um, next week, either Wednesday or Thursday, um, in order to finalize.
So there are things that may, that are still open?
There are a few items that are still open that could.
Okay.
Pop up still, um. In, in addition to that, we did receive, um, a few petition articles today.
Okay.
And, um, two or three were delivered at four fifty eight. So we haven't had a chance to verify those signatures yet, uh, so we will do that tomorrow.
What are the subjects?
Uh, so, um, uh, one petition that we did verify, uh, is in relationship to the community center and seeking voters' permission to authorize you to uh, enter into, um, negotiations either to purchase or to take the eminent domain, um, the property. That, um, may not be necessary if, if, uh, I was going to suggest that we also have an article that allows you to enter to a multi-year lease, um, with the, uh, with the property owner, that the building owner, the property, property owner. Um, so that was one petition article, a, a second one had to do with requiring all zoning changes to be voted by ballot. We'll have to check on the legality of that. Um. But, but maybe require a home rule petition to the legislature, I'm not sure, I have to look into that.
As you look into that one, um, would you look to see if other municipalities have something similar?
But, yes.
If that's what you're saying, okay.
Um, so that was the second one. A third one, uh, is in relationship to, there are two of them. You know, I haven't had a chance to read them carefully, uh, but they were two related to Powderhouse Hill. And, um, wanting to ensure, I believe, but quickly uh, ensure that, uh, that that is Article ninety seven lands. Meaning it is, um, must remain as conservation lands, and if any change were to take place, it would require um, a special act of the legislature. And you would typically, they require, um, at least similar lands to replace what's being taken out. Oftentimes, it's a two to one or three to one match.
I'm taking notes, which I probably shouldn't bother with, but it, what, what is the name of the article under which land is putting term in conservation?
So, so those are Article ninety seven. Yeah, yeah. Article ninety seven of the state constitution.
Yeah.
Is what that refers to. So those, those are the potential petition articles. So petition article with the requisite signatures, a hundred or more signatures is an automatic placement on the, uh, of the ballot, I'm sorry, on the warrant. And so we will need to proceed with those.
In, in your list, the one thing that I thought to discuss that in other word is, um, some sort of funding for engineering studies at, uh, the former Thonbroke site.
Okay, yes, I did, I didn't need to, um, yes, I want that to have that as part of the list. Um, so this would be for geotechnical analysis of the site of the old, the old capo site to see if it is suitable for any DPW facility. And, um, Chuck was hoping to get those figures this week so that we can plug in the number, that would be appropriate for that. So, um, Alan has his hand up, I see. And, um, we can also walk through the, the other articles that are suggested here.
Let's hear from Alan.
Uh, thank you, Anne. Just on the petition article to require all zoning amendments to be approved at the ballot. Um, I, I know Michelle will be aware of the interaction between that potential article and the special act that applies to Manchester, but depending on how it's worded, I suspect that it does fall within the terms of the special act and therefore is probably okay.
Thank you.
Greg, does that make sense to you?
Uh, yeah, yes, I just, my hesitation was because of, uh, the recent changes in zoning quantum of votes and that just raised a question in my mind of, if the state was uh, would allow that, that step. But, but yes, we have that, that special article, so.
Yeah, the, the special, the special act pro, pro, in essence, provides that anything that town meeting votes to put on the ballot goes to the ballot subject to the same quantum of vote requirement that we would, would be required to approve it at town meeting. So. Just, just a, just a, a, I, I know, I know Michelle is well aware of that, so she'll be looking at it.
So if you'd like to just to walk through.
Sure.
Sure, the possibilities here and, um, you know, fine, as to your preferences. So, um, we have talked about, uh, amending the general bylaw regarding parking, uh, particularly the location of the, um, resident sticker, uh, on the car, removing specificities.
I think we probably want to take a large chunk of that out. I don't, including the which streets are, um, resident only or?
Um, I, yes, I had a little bit of caution there, uh, in terms of, um, I mean, those street. We, we have those in there so that only residents can park and you don't have beach covers parking.
Oh, I'm not saying that we don't have, I'm suggesting that we make that a regulation.
Oh, I see.
Done by the, by, died by the parking clerk and the police department in concert.
Rather than having.
A list in our.
Bylaw should be simple, you know.
Who has the authority to make this decision?
Yeah. So, uh.
Yeah, no, I understand that.
That gets, that gets most of that section um, moved to the discretion of the parking clerk and.
Yeah, you, you may want to. Well, you should think about whether I want to have a, a vote on that as a select board or not.
Of course.
Yes.
Um, could you come up with some, um, or someone come up with some language?
Yes, yeah, we have some draft language already, but we'll continue to work on that this one.
Yeah.
So, yes, and then there was some, um, uh, some no parking zones again, if we want to take all those out and make them.
Discretion.
At the discretion of the select board or something.
Yeah, things change. It would be nice.
You don't want to have to change the bylaw every single time you change a street.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, so secondly, I mentioned this, um, that you would want to seek voter authorization to enter to a long-term lease for the, um, the land that the community center designs. So any, any, um, any real estate transaction requires town meeting approval. So that's, that's why we need to go to the voters for that. So just have that on, on the table, um, good progress being made in terms of, um, coming together on a draft agreement, lease agreement for, for that building. Um, with, with the association. So, and, um, I think that's moving forward in a good direction. So the next item, uh, potential for, um, rescinding some of the appropriation for the ladder truck. So the new ladder truck we had appropriated up to one point five million. Um, new truck is coming in at one point four. Um, so the, um, there actually is a difference of ninety five. And so, uh, one of the suggestions that, that Chief Neely has, um, is here to talk later this evening about uh, call firefighters, but you can chime in here as well, uh, is that you could reappropriate some of those dollars for the purchase of the second SUV. That SUV could serve as a non-transport paramedic response vehicle instead of the engine, the engine, the pumper. So that has been, uh, retrofitted to be a to serve as a paramedic, non-transport response vehicle. Obviously, it's a much larger vehicle. It takes the pumper out of town. Um, if, if there's, there's a fire and, you know, you'd be without a pumper. Um, and it's obviously SUV more nimble and quicker to maneuver and less wear and tear than the large vehicle.
Excuse me, uh, your SUV is so equipped already?
Mine is not. The engine one is equipped.
Can we have?
So there is the chief.
SUV.
Yes.
Is not already equipped for, uh?
So it's not, it's not, it's not, uh. Go to the question for a second. So, um, again, the chief can speak to this. The, I think, long term, I think the chief feels pretty strongly about a second full ambulance is the second that he would be uh, looking for down the road. Uh, the current ambulance is, let me say, five years old now.
It'll be five. Lead time on a new one is if we're lucky, twenty four to thirty six months, um, if we ordered it today. So kind of the idea behind the fly car is right now, if Essex calls for paramedic level service, we're currently sending our only ambulance out of town. So we could just send a paramedic and a fly car out of town, leave that ambulance available for our residents.
And you'd probably not like to send engine one out of town.
Uh, since that's the only truck we currently have that pumps water, no.
So, I don't know if we're gonna talk about it or move, hear the whole list and then go back to each one or how to proceed.
I, I, I kind of like talking about them as we go, but, but I, is there anybody? Is there any more discussion of, of moving the, um, non-transport, um, paramedic gear? Uh, to buying a new SUV to put the, the gear in, being more nimble and not taking a truck out on the.
I think it's an excellent idea.
Yeah, so it's just a question. So your, your vehicle would stay, would, would, would not be equipped? It would stay, stay as it is?
Correct. I think the idea was we probably outfit, um, my vehicle has a box. Correct. I think the idea was we probably outfit, um, my vehicle has a box starting in the back that would set off the ALS equipment in it. Um, so that allows like the ambulance is out of town and there's a second medical, um, when one person's driving, it's much easier if we drive an SUV and somebody's driving, we have to back in and out of.
No.
To avoid damage like that.
And how, how much, how much is that going to cost? Cost? Is that the ninety-five thousand that's shown there?
It is sixty-two, I think, and that's already, um, that's everything. That's like.
Made it detailed.
That's lights and all of that.
All the bells and stuff, literally?
Already red.
Huh?
Already red?
Uh, I believe so. It all depends on supply chain. There's literally supply chain issues all across the board. You say a government vehicle and they had, you know, months ago. I think there's a couple, a couple of lots. Whatever we can.
So the special equipment that we've got, which right now is an engine one.
Yeah.
Would get transferred.
Correct. And it still allows us the ability, um, as, you know, we get equipment, replace equipment and things like that. Um, you know, we could add these to our systems. Without equipment staying there, it's not a loss of equipment per se or a loss of what we got.
No, no, it's just getting transferred.
Yeah.
Perfect discussion with SUV. Sounds as if we're willing to put that on you.
Yeah, just have you confirm the number.
Yes, I, I put the vote in, um, there you go. It's already in.
Okay.
The cap line.
Okay.
And we still got thirty thousand though.
Yes.
Just did last Thursday.
So a fourth potential article, um, as you recall, we did not put the supplemental funds in for the fire union contract because that was still being negotiated. Um, and there's some, um, couple of other salary adjustments that, that, um, would be helpful to have. For, you know, as we look to hiring a planner, that's been a struggle. And also, um, part of our compensation study, we, we have a program behind, and I would have guessed the last couple of years, there's been a lot of movement in, in salaries and we are particularly behind, you know, my town clerk position. So a couple of options here, we, we can work with the finance committee and, and draw on reserve funds that they have available. Or we could seek a supplemental appropriation to cover it. So, um, uh, I put down a figure of twenty thousand, that is, is more than enough to cover those, those three needs.
We don't have to make that decision really until town meeting.
You, you could also wait until annual town meetings.
No, uh, what I'm saying, we don't have to decide where the funds come from in order to make the, put it on the warrant.
Well, if you're using reserve, the current reserve fund, that's already been appropriated. So you don't need to, you wouldn't need an.
You don't need a warrant. Okay.
So this is the.
How much in the reserve funds?
I, I was just trying to remember, um, is it a hundred and seventy-five or a hundred and something? Yeah, it's in that, it's in that.
Okay, and that, that covers twelve plus and that you haven't used any. How much we used last year? Just?
We used it all.
It was from the overtime of the year and adjustments.
Oh, okay, when you had money, all right, let's move some things around. Okay, so.
Right. We had overtime issue, remember?
Uh, I remember it well.
Oh.
That's coming up later.
So, um, I, I think the finance committee had discussed at least the fire contract and they felt that taking out the reserve was probably fine.
Yeah.
Um, but I just give you the option.
I, I think, I think it's important to hear from income first. Let them advise us and, you know, before we make a decision.
You gonna speak for your colleagues?
Well, we have a meeting on ten twenty-six.
Okay.
We're doing, like, we're doing capital.
Yep.
We can add.
So that would mean having you meet the next day, if you wanted to wait for that. Have, have your special meeting on Thursday, the twenty-seventh.
Well, Thursday the twenty-sixth. Friday the twenty-seventh.
Correct. Wednesday, Wednesday's the twenty-fifth.
Friday's the twenty-seventh.
That's Wednesday the twenty-fifth.
Things upset.
I thought it was the twenty-fifth, that's why.
I'm just looking, I can't speak for her.
So the twenty-fifth is when the finance committee, so you can meet Thursday, the twenty-sixth to, to finalize. Uh, yeah, there's a couple of items here that you may want their feedback on.
Are we penciling that in then, the twenty-sixth?
So I would personally, we should discuss whether or not people available the twenty-sixth or the twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh is a Friday?
Yes.
Okay. I'd prefer the twenty-sixth.
Morning or first of the day or end of the day?
The twenty-sixth, the twenty-sixth is, um, I've got it, it's on my calendar, is prat- planning practicum, um, and.
That's in the evening.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I have a, I have a commitment to the evening also. So, I mean, early, early evenings, right, me. This isn't a long discussion, right? We have specific.
Not a long discussion, no. I mean, you could, I would suggest you do it at eight-thirty or in the morning or at four-thirty or five in the evening.
Yeah.
Or the, the MBTA zoning at ten, and I guess eight-thirty is not going to run into ten.
Do you have a task force, a subcommittee meeting?
Yes, all I do is show up.
So eight-thirty, is that not good in the morning?
Not good for you? Oh, then we gotta, Becky says.
No, I could, I could do eight-thirty.
Becky, you're not understanding me here. It's not good for you, Becky.
At nine-thirty and then it, but, you know.
Becky, could you move closer to your microphone? We're having a really hard time hearing.
Oh, sorry, is that any better?
Not, not much, no.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay, I think I heard you say that eight-thirty was better for you than later.
Yes.
Should we hear for like fifteen, twenty minutes?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's at eight-thirty on Thursday.
I, 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 I can't make that at eight-thirty on Thursday, the twenty-sixth, but I don't think you need me for this one either.
I always liked your presence, Alan, but I, in terms of an essential presence, no.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, Alan.
No problem.
Okay.
Okay, so moving on, um, another request, uh, they're working with our, um, consortium, I- IT consortium, the Danvers, um, they are recommending some improvements, upgrades to our, our cybersecurity. Uh, this is based on a recent hack that happened to Middleton. Uh, and so there's some, um, hard lessons learned there. And so they are recommending some upgrades. Uh, Andrea was hoping to have that meeting this morning with them. They had to reschedule that for later in the week, so I don't have the exact figure. But it, uh, it's actually going to be probably that lower range. I, I said thirty to fifty thousand. I think it's probably going to be closer to that, that lower end. But that would be a supplemental request with the current, current budget we are. Any comments there?
It'd be nice to see the whole list of things we might need to do in that arena, you know, better.
Yeah, we, yeah, they, they do have a, a, a list that they were already scheduled to do and are doing now that we have funded. Uh, these are some additional things, but yes, I can give you that list. Next on my list here, um, the potential of funding, uh, an audit of the school district's budget and operations. We called it up the, what I call the summit meeting, the meetings of the two boards and select boards and the two. The five board meeting, uh, the five board meeting, there was consensus that, uh, that an outside audit of school um, operations expenses would, would be helpful. Uh, Essex is putting this, um, near special town meeting, once again, the same night. Um, they're feeling that if the two towns are funding it, then, then you have some more control over that. They received a quote from, from one firm, quite a wide range, depending on the level of detail that is desired. They said seventy-five to a hundred and twenty thousand for that, uh, for such an audit. If it were to be split on that, you know, one-third, two, three, two-thirds approach with the two towns, then, you know, we could be responsible for up to eighty thousand of that cost. Alternatively, uh, it's something that you could ask the district to do on their own, or it could be a three-way split. Which is something that has been done, uh, for example, when we did the, uh, building feasibility study, that was a, a three-way split. So again, I think finance committee in the past has talked about, we are in the school. Pay for this, um, but we haven't talked about it as a, as a board here.
Would the finance committee suggest that the school pay for the whole thing?
I, I think that's what the previous conversation was, but we didn't have numbers either.
No, I don't think it was that specific.
Yeah, it was a very, it was a very general conversation. It was not a.
I don't think it was a definitive decision.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Fair way to say it.
Uh, in the spirit of partnership and us all having skin in the game to work, you know, a very difficult issue. I, I kind of like the idea of a three-way split, just, you know, as a first pass, um, that's just, you know, initial thought.
I want to be sure that, that, that when the report comes out, um, people don't say, well, that's because the school was directing it. That's.
Right, right.
And I think some of that has to be dealt with, with Essex, which I think has, has much question. It would be nice to have some idea what the scope of services are that are different between seventy-five and a hundred and twenty.
Right, that's a big range.
Yeah.
Uh, I can try to get more details from there, but we've seen it.
This, this, this is an audit that would be done within this current budgeting cycle.
So, yeah, this is something that is. That's happening right, yeah, the next few months, yes. Yeah. It was desired to have it for this budget cycle.
I guess I can't ask Sarah what her committee thinks.
But the one thing the finance committee will not know is a lot of these monitoring articles. We're going to want to know how that would have success. Before we.
If we're going to have a very short meeting to discuss the warrant, it'd be nice to get particularly the questions about, about this.
What? Yeah, get that to you ahead of time, for sure. Is that what you?
Yeah, get it to us in that time. Yeah, I guess we can, we can mull it over individually, but it seems like a potentially large discussion. But.
We've had a portion of our meeting rejoined. We were starting with that.
Every nine quarters, yeah.
Have, have we had an audit of the school budget before?
Well, they do, they do an annual audit.
Yeah.
We do, but in terms of a sort of an operational audit.
Yes.
Uh, certainly not in recent history, no. I don't, I, I don't know enough to say better, but, um, since I can hear, I'm not aware of that sometimes.
Okay.
And, and I'm sure it was not them when I was on the school. Okay.
All right, so that's a question mark, um, and then, the question about extending parking along Beach Street. So again, I think there were some conversations at the previous meetings where the thought is perhaps we can get a crosswalk, uh, near Harbor Point. And that may take up one or two parking spaces. And so therefore you'd like to recoup those lost parking spaces. Uh, a little past Tappan Street, so three to five additional parking spaces there.
Are you aware it's in the general bylaw? It can't be parked in this state.
Right, right. So it'd have to.
Why this one is on, going on the warrant.
So do, do you want to pick a number? How many new parking spaces?
How many would we be taking away?
The most should be taken away is two.
The previous turns two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and seventeen, the records of thirty spots all the way down to, uh, full neck. I'd be happy with a half a dozen spots at this point.
Yeah.
I'm going to compromise and say ten, you know, six to ten. That might, and then can also maybe that opens up some parking at Masco for more bonus placards too, I don't know.
I think we shouldn't say six to ten.
I'm saying, pick a number, you guys decide. All right, I'm saying I'm happy.
Let's, let's say ten, and if we get a motion from the floor to amend it to six.
Whatever, yes.
But we need to at least recoup two. And that's a public step, I mean, that you, you, Kathy, you were saying that both, uh,
My companion.
And DIP both said.
They were fine with the, the crosswalk, um, they just didn't want to lose parking spaces. So I think as long as parking is accommodated.
Mm-hmm.
I'll confirm that, um, that meeting, uh, Wednesday morning.
Say ten?
That's a max. I'd prefer closer to six, but, you know, I gotta get a motion on the floor for me to change the ten. That's what applies.
I don't care. I just want to do something.
Look, yeah, but I, 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 you know, I see one space disappearing for sure, but those spaces are pretty big and two is, that's all. That's a, that's a lot of, lot of curb distance.
Almost thirty tracks.
Yeah, 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 it's probably with the. And that's a lot.
So that's almost thirty feet.
But there are also guidelines in terms of distant.
I don't know what the rules are, like a fire hydrant.
Well, it's also.
Distance from crosswalkers where parking.
Well, well, that's the issue, how close you park to the crosswalk.
So for clarity, do, um, we, do we need to put, what is it that we need the town to vote on? Is it just the parking spaces or is it also the addition of the crosswalk?
Um, you don't need the approval of the crosswalk, that is something you can.
Okay, so I guess what I'm suggesting is we think carefully about how we word the warrant. So for example, um, we could agree to add a crosswalk. That's our decision, right? And then bring forth to town meeting, you know, this, this thing that we, that we redo would take, we would lose two parking spaces. So the purpose of this warrant is to, you know, not lose parking. So it's, it's how you want to frame it, right? Because I, what I'm, my concern is if we don't get any additional parking spaces, do we not want to add the crosswalk? I, I think it's needed from a safety standpoint. So I would be concerned about not getting a crosswalk. If we ask for too many parking spaces and don't get them.
I agree.
If we don't get any, then we lose two.
Well, that's, that is, that's why I guess what I'm proposing is that we.
Don't tie the crosswalk.
Yeah, exactly. Like we make a decision to do the crosswalk for safety purposes and then when we discuss it with the town, we, we.
So the town is, the, the, the only thing in the, in the warrant would be that uh, we have the opportunity to add, I don't know, X number of hundred feet beyond, X number of feet beyond Tappan Street for parking, period.
And?
Yes.
The, the warrant article doesn't need to specify the number of spaces you want to add. It can simply say to add a number of spaces and then your motion on town meeting floor can specify the number. You have, you have that time to figure it out.
Thank you, Alan. That's very useful.
But do you want to, do you want to provide context?
I want to. I wanna provide context, but I.
In the article, without time.
I guess the context I'm hoping we could provide is we, we are planning to, you know. Not leave that out there as an option, not to do the crosswalk, so we are planning to put a crosswalk. In this place, and as a result. The reason for this warrant is we would like to, you know, accommodate some additional.
Definitely need context, because say, what do you know?
Okay, and then the, the, uh, the last one that, that they had brought earlier, that was the geotechnical study. For the, uh. For the old compost site to. To explore the feasibility of the land accepting, uh, any DPW facility. And you know, I'll have a, I'll got a lot of minds. Come check, hopefully tomorrow or the next day.
And there'll be an addition, there may be an additional. Article from.
Correct, so the planning board, uh, had a public hearing on Monday, the twenty-third. To discuss amending the current, uh, bylaw which restricts. The use of a carriage house, the space above a garage to an employee. And it would, it would remove that restriction and make it available to, to.
If we. Exhausted the warrant as a source of entertainment. Okay, when our next.
So just to, just to make sure everyone understands, so this is for Monday, November thirteen.
Yes.
Uh, we would start at six-thirty.
Yes.
At the, uh, at the elementary school.
Yes.
We just, we will finalize this warrant, replacing, um, that's your special review on the twenty-sixth.
Greg, Greg, I think it would be not a bad idea to vote the date and time tonight.
Is there a motion for a date and time for a town meeting, date, time and location? So it's, uh, November thirteenth, at the memorial, at the memorial school, uh, at the memorial.
At six, six-thirty, so moved.
Second.
Vote, vote, Mr. Paulson.
Yes.
Anne says yes.
John says yes.
Becky says yes.
She's still here.
Yes, I am.
Thank you. Okay. The next item is staffing updates.
I'm, I'm gonna say good night.
Thank you very much for putting up with all of this and for your useful.
Always a pleasure, thank you.
So staffing updates, uh, just wanted to update you on the search for a new town planner slash finance director. Uh, so unfortunately, our, our, our. Leading candidate that we had hoped to, uh, to bring on board, we're not able to come to terms. Uh, and so we are back out on that search, uh, we have received. Uh, a, a few, uh, new resumes, we're having some initial conversations. Um, pre-screenings for those candidates to see if it makes sense to continue to advance, advance them. Um, in the meantime, we continue to, uh, look for interim town planner. That you wear, who had been with us since last November, um, had done a very nice job for us, but had to. Um, had to fully retire, um, pressures on the home front, uh, required, required that. Um, and so unfortunately, we don't have her services with us, we certainly appreciated the work that she was able to do. Um, uh, there is, the leads on interim have not panned out so far, though I do have, um. Um, possibility with M A P C, the Metropolitan Planning Commission, being able to provide some minimal, but at least some. Uh, support to, uh, you know, in the range of maybe ten hours or so a week. Uh, to at least help with, uh, applications and making sure that those are getting posted properly and. And reviewed, that if, if there weren't very many applications, which often we don't have that many. Um, applications for the, for the planning board, uh, they could, uh, help the planning board in some of the zoning work that they're doing. Um, so we'll continue to pursue that as, uh, as a, as a stopgap measure. Um, in the meantime, we are bringing on board a, uh, consultant to help with the MBTA zoning efforts. The task force voted to approve moving ahead with the firm, uh. This past Thursday, and so she'll be, uh, she and her firm will be starting up, uh, very soon. On that.
You signed the contract?
Uh, I haven't signed the contract with, you will, we will do that in the next couple of days. So.
We, we are anticipating the arrival of this person.
Yes, yes.
Great enthusiasm.
I understand, I understand, yeah, and, uh, so I think it's a, uh, a good choice, she certainly has very strong credentials. Has been helping out a number of other communities with MBTA zoning. Um, and, um, actually was intimately involved with developing the compliance tool that we need to use. For the state, so she, she certainly knows that program inside and out, and she's a very, um. Useful tool for, for the task force as you sort of test, test run various scenarios. Um, so that, that, that's good news. Um, new, uh, conservation agent started up today. And we have an overlap with, uh, with our retiring Chris Bifoni, uh, for this week, so we have a little bit of transition there. Um, and where we are sharing the new person with, with Hamilton. As, and their new, uh, new I R A H, you just. So that's underway. So those, I wouldn't just review those with you, the status. So, uh, again, we, we, we advertise, if anyone knows of anyone, it would be a strong candidate. Or a planner, I would love to hear about those.
The next discussion item is the Booster Club Kern.
So I think, as you know, the, uh, the vendor, uh, who is setting up and will be operating the carnival. Um, has requested that they be allowed to have staff sleep overnight on the grounds in trailers that they provide. Um, originally, your approval, uh, request was that that would not be happening. Um, so they, they did have to change, uh, change vendors, the original vendor, uh, double booked. Um, but luckily, uh, has provided this, uh, alternative vendor who, uh, actually has very, very good credentials. References, references, the Word Chat, and, and, uh, no, uh. No black marks on the state level and all of that, good stuff. Um, so the, uh, it would be appropriate, if you're in agreement, to vote to amend your original permission. To allow, um, staff to stay overnight on the grounds.
Well, it's sacred news, boy. Has this been taken up with the police chief?
Yeah, so, um, there was a, uh, staff meeting, uh, last, yeah, last week. Um, Brian was helpful in, in organizing that, and, uh, yes, police and fire and DPW. Public health have all, um, basically signed off, um, approval for allowing this. Uh, the chief does reserve the, the, uh, the option of requiring your overnight detail if, if he feels that it becomes necessary. So, but yes, they are, they are in agreement with it.
They have a curfew at.
Um, eleven, eleven o'clock, yes.
Where are they gonna find anything to eat after?
They're working at ten o'clock, but, uh, it was. It was originally was ten, and then they're probably not gonna finish up until ten. They're gonna find real soon that there's nothing open after ten anyway, but, uh.
Allows them to run, so.
They gotta go out of town.
Takes a little time.
Even the new roast beef joint is closing at nine, so.
Okay, I, I, I think. Is there anything else that we need to? Okay. Is there a movement to amend our previous permission to allow crew to sleep onsite? Um, with a, uh, a curfew and the possibility of a, um. Detail, please detail.
Some second.
Ready to devote. Anne says yes.
John, yes.
Becky.
Yes.
Okay. And finally, we get.
The third topic is, uh, Fire Department call force. Um, Neely is here, he can review the efforts today.
Uh, can we, uh, sharing ability and just make sure.
We have an electronic. Oh, I, I, yeah, oh, yeah, let me give you permission to do that, yeah, absolutely. There you are, sorry. Host, uh, yes, okay, there you are.
Uh, so as you know, we did a month-long initiative to try to get qualified, I'm sure you looked at your meeting packets already and kinda looked. Eat potatoes of our, uh, presentation. It actually ended up with fourteen candidates, more than I thought we were gonna get, so I was happy with that. Um, during the whole months of them, we put them in the cricket, we might have seen the signboard, this is a new town, as well as a social media post. Uh, which all had, uh, good results. Uh, the fourteen applicants, we had five that were firefighters already certified to the, the one, two, three of, uh. The applicants were EMTs, one was a paramedic, and three were previous Manchester, um, call firefighters. Uh, seven applicants of the fourteen were within a reasonable response range. Uh, so Greg and I had talked and I, we initially had, I think, ten minutes from, uh, from the house to the station. And Brett brought up that the Manchester not be within ten minutes of the fire stations, we moved that up to fifteen. So we had applicants from Salem, Woburn, um, a couple from Rockport. Um, so if we narrowed it down to what would actually be beneficial to the town, we're down to seven. And this is all prior to doing any type of interviews, et cetera, and vetting the candidates that put in for us. Um, I did a little, uh, research.
I have a question, if I could just ask, so, um. You looked at where these people live, what about where they work?
So I, that was not on the application during some, uh. About four work in Boston, one works remote. Um, so it doesn't seem to be, I know one works in locally landscaping, uh, contracting.
The reason for my question is, um, I know in Carlisle, uh, where my brother lives, I guess they have a call force. And they provide workspace for those people who work remotely, they provide it in the firehouse. Or in one of the town buildings next to the firehouse.
Okay.
So just another creative option, I thought I'd throw it out there if you hadn't, um.
I know some of the schools do like live-in students and things like that.
Yeah, yeah, that kind of thing.
Um, but yeah, so that's something we'd have to dive into when we do vetting process. Um, where, where they work, because if they work out of time, they work in Boston, that limits their availability, uh, to us.
Alright, so as a follow-up to that, it could be maybe some of the other candidates that don't live so close, but work close.
Or could work remotely from.
Yes, you really have to kinda look at.
Yeah, absolutely.
All fourteen and see what the story is, this is just their whole arrangement.
Uh, I dove a little bit further, I wanted to get in some, uh, meetings where I surround these communities with their call force to see. Um, what they're actually getting, uh, from their call force, uh, so these are just, these aren't like-sized communities, these are just. People around, uh, Manchester, so Essex currently on staff has forty-five call firefighters. Eleven respond to twenty percent of the calls and more, so that's twenty-four percent of the staff. Uh, Hamilton has thirty-three, only eight respond to twenty percent or more of the calls, and that's. The, where the twenty percent comes from, that's usually the benchmark that we say, is this a cost-benefit analysis that happens first? You have to give responding at least twenty percent of our, our request to service. Uh, one of them has twenty-seven qualified fighters, twelve responded twenty percent or more.
Oh, good question about calls.
Yeah.
Of. Most of your calls are ambulance.
Uh, about seventy-nine percent and change.
That, that's more or less counts as.
Yeah.
Would you be expecting call firefighters to respond to ambulance calls?
So not the initial ambulance call, where we need help is subsequent calls, so we'll have simultaneous calls. And we need people to come back, so it's not necessarily that first call, it's that second call where we, where we run that.
So I don't see how that, how I'm going to get that information from these numbers.
So you, you're not, you're, you're gonna get participation rates and to, uh, to be, you know, fair, every town's call volumes. And the requests on the call department is different, so Essex, all calls require a responsible call department. Um, where Topfield is very much like us, Middleton is very much like us, where we can handle the first calls on, it's not significant in nature. With the undue staff.
Yeah, so I, I guess to that point, uh, I don't, I, I don't know for each of these communities, uh, where there are full-time, full-time, uh. People.
Yeah.
And that has to affect things, because then call becomes, I won't call it, well, maybe I would do call it second tier. If you've got people that are covering the call that comes in, you're not gonna go and chase down the call folks.
Correct, so and, and that can be a double-edged sword, if you will, if where they're not coming to every call, that you have to keep the call firefighters entertained. You, they have to get experience by doing calls, um, and then if you overwork them, then they don't wanna commit either. So it's, it's a kind of a happy medium, depending on, you know, you know, how we utilize them and, you know, which way we go about it. And I've been on the both ends of it, uh, being a qualified fighter my entire life, um, you know, it's. You know, all weekend long, non-stop, like, alright, I need a break, I'm not gonna come back. Versus, okay, I haven't done anything in a couple of weeks, once the next call is. Uh, but I just wanted to get the idea, I would say the, the towns that are very similar to us is, is, um. You know, the makeup, Middleton would be the closest, followed by Topfield and Hamilton, those three communities have full-time staff. Middleton and Topfield both have twenty-four hour staff, Hamilton staffs, uh, during the day. Um, and then obviously, Ipswich has full-time staff as well, and, uh, they're very similar to us, so. You know, you look at the percentages, and I'm just trying to look at a cost-benefit ratio of, you know, what to expect out of our call firefighters. Forecasted based upon what we've seen this year. So what's it gonna cost to outfit these? Um, so if we did, uh, the seven firefighters turnout here is thirty-four thousand, uh, firefighter one and two training, which four of them would need. Uh, it's, we'll round up to thirty thousand, first responder training, which is a state mandate for any, uh, public safety. Four of them would be, which is twenty-three hundred, and then in-house training, driving the fire trucks, operating our trucks. Policies of procedures, things like that, um, we're looking at a, you know, startup cost about seventy-two thousand dollars before they kinda even hit the street. Um, that doesn't include any, if there's any overtime to breaks, but I can do some of the training, but there's other people that are more knowledgeable in different areas than I am. And you can articulate it better, so there'd be a little bit of overtime cost, depending on who's doing the education. Um, so the reason I brought all these numbers up is I'm willing to go whichever way you guys direct me. Um, when I looked at the numbers and, you know, forecasting it out for Manchester. You know, we, if we're optimistic, and we say we're gonna be a little bit better than the average, and we're gonna get a thirty percent. Um, participation rate, that means we're gonna get two qualified fighters twenty percent of the time. Now, is that worth it? I don't know, you know, I look at it, I've looked at a couple of things, does having a call fire department put us in. A different tier for getting grants, it does and it doesn't, in some aspects it hurts us, some aspects, uh, it helps us. Um, you know, there's been some talk about, you know, putting on a day deputy to help the fire prevent self-signaling and everything else going on in town. And, you know, I know funding is tight, that might be something that was cut, is it worth reallocating those funds to have one person? And, you know, I know funding is tight. Yeah, that might be something that was cut. Is it worth reallocating those funds to have one person? Sixty percent of the time or or based upon our calls and six whenever emergency responses happen during the day, the sixty would happen. Uh, Tuesday through Friday, which would be a potential, um. Shift that person. So I'm just presenting these ideas to you guys to kind of get an idea of which way you'd like me to.
I I kind of, I mean, you're 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 comparing somebody who's full time. Multi-year with the startup cost.
Correct, yeah, absolutely. So I I just don't know if we're gonna get a cost benefits. Of the startup with the call department. I guess I'm I'm trying to, you know, have a discussion. You guys, see what you think. Um, you know, which way you'd like us to to kind of lean and and build.
I'm just trying to figure out. I'm not sure what questions I'm supposed to ask. There's a lot of stuff here.
I have a question. So when you talked about the people who were within, um. The distance, the appropriate distance, that was was seven hundred.
Yeah.
How many of those were already trained firefighters or none of them?
Uh, two were trained firefighters.
Okay.
Uh, one was, uh, one of those is a firefighter, paramedic.
Okay.
One's a firefighter. And one's an EMT, an firefighter.
Okay, so. I think that was the grant. So if you wanted to start with the people who are already ready.
Yeah, so that's seven, um, the seven, the, uh, dollar figure I brought up here.
Yeah.
That is based upon those seven. So three were firefighters, uh, three had some type of EMS training.
Right. So my question is, in order to start up the program to see if we can make it successful.
Yeah.
Would we need to start with all seven or? Could you start with fewer than that? And I don't, I don't know the answer. That's why I'm asking.
Yeah, so I don't know. I think one person we have to bet, you don't know all seven. Um, what are they gonna bet all the way through? And then if we lower those numbers, uh, those percentages going to change that we just.
Right, that's what I meant.
You know, so that's one of those things. I I hate to throw good money away if we can use the project. That's.
Yeah. So does this money that is being spent reduce? What we're spending in other areas or does it just improve, uh, responsiveness?
I mean, I want to be careful with my words.
All right.
It's gonna be an additional cost. I'm not. It's gonna improve our response in this twenty percent of the time. Based upon forecasted numbers.
Well, do you please overtime?
I will have the, they'll have the old back to me. And if you've seen the monthly, but the overtime, you know, once we hit the standard, it should be. All the way down, trending significantly down, but once we get that last person.
I guess the question, are we looking for numbers? Of the day.
What do you mean numbers? Dollars?
No, are we looking for numbers as far as bodies go, people? Or can we get a better bang for our buck? By having a deputy. Who can, uh, take off, take on more responsibility? As far as fire prevention goes during the day, there'll be an overlap.
Yeah.
As far as time goes. And and then the other question is, what does rank and file think?
Um, so the rank and file are, um, they will do either one. I'll tell you that morale has drastically increased. We are on an awesome trajectory. Um, so I they'll they'll work with anything that we give them. Um, I think in my personal opinion, I think the money's better spent in a day deputy, especially, you know, we look at, we're sharing. Uh, conservation, um, individuals, we might have the potential of sharing that cost with another community as well going forward. Obviously, that's an initial buck process, um. Just something to kind of think about, you know, going forward with shared services.
We want to support income. Yes, the income did not support hiring the deputy chief in this upcoming fiscal year because of the. Number of new firefighters been brought on and the finance committee is very much trying. Call fire. It's been a hotspot for a long time. And it's a one time cost where rather than a deputy chief would be more than that. Year including benefits, yeah. Not to say. Think I wouldn't consider it in a subsequent year, but we just felt it's a new chief. You know, a lot of new people that you really need to figure out whether you will.
Do you think? I do think that the call will have ongoing costs. I don't think it's just.
But but the big.
It's not seventy one thousand dollars a year.
The big cost. Is is in the in the training and outfitting and they don't need that.
Yeah, ongoing cost, I'd say about fifty percent.
You will always lose. There'll always be attrition. There's gonna be a cycle. I will be seven every year. Um, but it could be, could be free every year.
And is there some annual training that they're refresher deal that they have to go through?
Yeah, so medical wise, there's a pressure training. Fire wise, typically there's at least a month or bi-monthly training they have to attend, uh, two or four hours depending on. The topic. Um, and the other thing to kind of, I didn't mention here is you look at the national trend, the national trend is, you know, it's kind of a downward slope. Um, so, you know, I. Like I said, I I'm willing to do wherever you direct me to go, I'm willing to go. I just, you know, my personal opinion is probably not in the long term. We might be able to get these seven people on board, but if we look at the history of the call departments here, the participation rate, um, was well below twenty percent. It was sub ten percent.
Yeah, but as you, as you say. Mostly it's it's eighty percent ambulance calls. For which you wouldn't need them. Unless you needed somebody to stay in the station because you had a second call.
So they, so we need people to go on that second call. That's the, it's not, we can't cover two calls ourselves. We can cover the first call. There are, there are primary responses in the second. Uh, which has been happening more frequently as well.
Um, I I was going to ask, um. How often do you have to overlapping calls?
So, uh, this is October. So September, we had eleven or twelve overlapping calls. So it is, it it's not a rare occurrence by any stretch.
How do you handle them now?
Um, fingers crossed. So, uh, it depends on what the call is. We have mutually that comes in. Sometimes there's a delay. Um, for instance, there was a a medical the other morning on, uh, Plaza Street, which I had to, I was coming from Essex, our ambulance was coming from. Rockport, I lost a line. Uh, so it's just getting the people down.
That will prove when you have the phone.
So it, so we had, um, three on duty, but the call that we had prior took all three. It was a critical call. So it all, if if there was four on, I would give you a one. So, yes.
Four, four, I doesn't give you two, two or two.
It depends if it's a cardiac arrest, a really sick person that requires two people to care for the patient, one person drive, that still brings us down. Those, those are thankfully for everybody, uh, not very prevalent.
Did you engage call people, uh, when there's already one first call going out or do you wait just because, because there may not be a second call that comes in, but you don't know?
So it depends on that that first call. So typically, um, if it's a rollover on the highway, we call, we call the call people right away. If it was a commercial fire alarm or like the high school, a school, something that has a high risk elderly housing, those would all, um, involve the call right away. Where, um, you know, if it's a residential smoke detector going off from cooking, we wouldn't bring bring in the call.
Okay, well, I'm I'm interested in what Kathy said. Why do you have to go to seven right away? Because I think there'd be a point of diminishing returns when you say, I I mean, only a certain percentage of these people actually respond twenty percent of the time or whatever it was.
Right.
So.
I guess it'd be, you know, playing lottery, picking the right ones.
Well.
What would be the cost of, um, doing a further screening? Um, and coming back to talk to us again?
I mean, it'd be no, I can, can you elaborate a little bit on the screen?
You've said, you've said you've just received these applications.
I'm doing.
So so vetting, an interview process, that type of thing?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, there would be no costs.
No cost.
Yeah.
No.
I'm actually thinking, you know, would these people be terribly disappointed if you called them in and talked to them and 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 then we decided not to do it? Or is that just the way life goes?
Sorry.
I I I would like to know how many of those actually reasonable candidates.
Okay, and and that's that's tough to tell too. Um, you know, I've had people I've worked with that would be terrible on paper and they're awesome. They show up all the time. You have people like, oh, this person's gonna be amazing. You might. Turn out not so hot. Um, so I, we certainly conduct them. That's, that's absolutely possible.
Anne, if I may.
Of course, Becky.
Um, I I agree with what Brian said. Do we have numbers for, um. A deputy as well? Could we get that information for comparison?
I can, I can get them from, Hamilton just added a deputy spot. We'll get that, you know, from the town administrator.
Yeah, I mean, you're. Rough figures all in, they're gonna be a hundred to a hundred and twenty.
And I I I think in terms of, um. Of, um, transitioning, uh, I think, um. It's one of the aspects that we need to take into consideration. Does that make sense? Can you hear me?
Jake's a young guy.
I know, I am, I am the young guy. My wife's getting a little angry at you doing three hours of work when I get home.
No, and I just, it's, we've, we've been talking about getting, uh, deputies or, um, assistants lined up in a number of areas. Um. Anyway, I just would like that information.
Hey, Anne, this, this is Tom Parkins. Can I wade in here a little bit?
Oh, he's finance committee. Oh, he's the fire department liaison. Okay, yes, please.
So the chief and I were talking a little bit about the safer grant. And how that might work into this whole process. So, you know, maybe hiring through the safer grant. I noticed the whole three one arm kind of concept. But if we're hiring somebody. As a firefighter, the chief might have the ability to elevate somebody within the staff currently to that deputy position. And we're looking down, three years down the road. So I don't know if the chief wanted to wade into that conversation or not.
Yeah, so the safer grant, I know, uh, you kind of were hammered with the two and two hour rule for probably better part of two and a half years. Uh, however, where we currently lay, uh, our four working groups all have four firefighters assigned. Uh, we will drop to three. These are vacation, personal day, sick day, et cetera. So we do drop below that. Um, if we did apply for a safer grant, which would basically, if we applied for four people. We would be guaranteed, it would be four groups of five, so we'd be guaranteed that two in, two out a hundred percent of the time, which actually throws us up to the higher end of that. Um, safer grant. Um, with that safer grant, a couple of things we know, we know we're gonna lose two. Uh, just based upon retirements over, by the time the safer grant even kicked in, it would be closer to twenty twenty six. So we're gonna lose two already through attrition. Um, historically, we'll lose one other going somewhere else. Uh, and then if you play the deputy into it. That would absolve those four people in the way the safer grant works. Now, it used to have to have some ownership starting year one. And it would kind of titrate up to year three. Now it's, they cover the first three quarters of costs. And then, um, we take over, but there's no. Responsibility to cover those costs going forward after three years. So if those people, if we have three, four people attrition out or one becomes a deputy and three attrition out. Um, then that has solidified that kind of, uh, favor. So that's another thing.
What's the cycle of the secret?
Three years.
Okay, there's. Are there entry dates? When do you have?
So normally it's right around now. They pushed it. I think and they were worried about the federal shutdown, so they pushed it to January. Application date, my guess is the words would probably start in June or July at the earliest, uh, probably a little later, probably this time next year.
Doesn't hurt.
Let me, let me just make sure I follow most of this. The idea. Is that we would take, we might apply for a safer grant, which would give us four additional firefighters. Bringing us to five for each.
Before anyone was, who did the different positions.
And you hope that by the end of three years.
Definitely got it away.
So I don't, I don't.
Three people will go away and one of them will be a deputy. And bringing us back for four.
To fall back, my, 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 my book this is, that once we've had that many firefighters, the town's not gonna want to drop down. I can't see the population.
I have never heard of anyone suggesting that we should have fewer firefighters, except for finance.
That's what I'm saying. So I'm saying if we end up not saving three with twenty firefighters. And then as chief says, we're gonna start to rotate, we're gonna start to, uh, retire out. We're gonna be looking to replace them.
So so if we want to get into a larger discussion, which you probably not do not want to do.
No.
Uh, you know, kind of my philosophy on this, if I had a crystal ball and, you know, I got all my wishes and I won the battle bomb, actually. And all my wishes is we would do that safer grant and then by having a three year trial period, now we can say, hey, in that three year period, if we provide paramedic service to Essex. Or Hamilton or Wenham, what's the revenue stream that comes in? Does that offset those to your point going forward? Instead of having to fund a trial, this is also not an agency pre-trial. That was the other part of that thought process, if we went that route. I know we've kind of all have raised out into a key difference.
I I think. I have. I have heard. More than I can assimilate right now. Um, and with the permission of the rest of the board, I'm going to suggest that you do some more qualifying of the seven people. And maybe look to see if if any of the. Outside work. In the, but.
Sure, I mean, that certainly is part of the vetting process because we can, you know, have an interview with them, find out, you know, where they work, they work local.
And then we have, yeah, we have, I understand that nobody is very good at hiring. I have made some terrible hiring mistakes in my life. Um, and and we don't expect you to be perfect, but I'd like to have your opinion of these people before we make a decision.
Right, yeah, I I think it's important to understand why they want to be. A call firefighter, right?
Here, in particular.
Well, why they want to be one, period, if they're not one already. I I didn't ask if any of the seven are already.
So three were.
Firefighters.
Well, three were qualified fighters here, right?
Oh, that's right, that's right.
Uh, one is a full time firefighter that resides in town but works elsewhere.
Okay, so for example, the three that used to be. Called firefighters, how well did they do, right? You know, and, um, and for those that aren't, what makes them think they want to be, you know? Um, so to Anne's point, I like Anne's suggestion about, let's take this one step at a time and. And, uh, before making big decisions.
Thank you very much. That was really very interesting.
Yeah, and the data is very helpful too. Thank you.
Given us a lot to think about. And no two in, two out.
All right, I had to slip it in there. I was hesitant to do it, but.
Becky, do you have anything to add?
Other than what I asked before, nope. Thank you very much, Chief.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Thanks.
Right. Now have a further review of the. Thank you, Sarah. It was very useful having you here. Don't be insulted that I might stay in for the rest.
That was just a few highlights from last, last few months. Certainly, um, staffing issues and hiring. In the front center, unfortunately, that indicated earlier that first we had hoped to bring on board for the planner, did not accept. I've been working, that's what's getting it up and running. Pretty more tied into that, given the lack of a full time planner. Um, certainly the, uh, the budget process for next fiscal year is is underway. And continuing the, uh, work on the governance project. Uh, work on the community center is a bit of a curve ball that we've responded to. Um, but that's progressing, I think, and, uh, also making good progress on the discussions with the Masons. So those are some of, some of the highlights in the last, last few months, last quarter. And then looking ahead, obviously, we have this special time meeting around the corner here. From the center. Mentions the cyber cybersecurity is is an important priority, making sure we are. Doing all that we can there.
When, could you send us the information on this set?
Yes. Yes.
Kathy asked for it specifically, but.
Yeah, I'll give you all, yeah, for sure. Yep, happy to, I'm happy to have your input on that as well. Police union negotiations will be starting up soon, they are, their current contract will expire this coming, this coming June, so they are off-cycle from the others, based on the last agreement that we had put together. And then, I mentioned the compensation study, we just received the draft the other day. Put that into its final form and share that with you. But it does look like we will, we could benefit from looking at some new, new approaches to, to the compensation that we provide for, for the taxpayers. Both, both not only a total balance, but just how we, the ranges that we might set, and some incentives that we might build into that.
So, is it anticipated that the, as part of the compensation adjustments you're gonna look at, you would be making the ranges more transparent than they are, like, some organizations actually publish the ranges. And is, is, was that your thinking, or?
We, we don't really have ranges, formal ranges now.
Oh, okay, so we don't have any right now, okay. So, the reason I keep asking about that is, I just caution us, making sure that we're taking the rights, the steps in the right order, when you start talking about perhaps making compensation more transparent, which is a good thing, right? There are prerequisites you wanna make sure you have in place, so if you start, for example, if you start publishing ranges, you know, people are gonna ask, well, why am I in the first quartile and not the fourth quartile? And, and you have to be, you have to have a performance management approach in place to be able to answer those questions well. So, I'm hearing a lot about compensation study, which is good, really good. I just don't feel.
That other piece.
Yeah, what's the, the prerequisites all have to be in place, otherwise it could wind up really backfiring badly.
And we've just started those conversations, so first step is just collect the data.
Okay, good.
And now that we have the data, to sit down with, with the consultants and really walk through some of those issues that you just identified. Happy to have your, happy to have your input on that. And then lastly, just my note about some succession planning, so we do have some, some internal staff who might be interested in filling my, my position on my entire, so we're working on getting them to some training, having them work with me on various projects. Happy to talk about whatever you think could use improvement, some goals that you would like to see, et cetera.
I, I really appreciate the, the way we engaged so quickly on the community center, I think that was really important, that, that was starting from a communication standpoint, getting that in control. And I just think the way you jumped in there, it was just fantastic, and also the work you've been doing, doing with mine on the Masons and everything, I think that's really excellent work, happy to see the progress on the succession planning, so that's terrific. And on the, on the cyber, you know, I'm glad we're finally, you know, kinda starting to dig in there a little bit, because that was identified as a, as a risk, and so that's, really good to see that happening, too. Just a tangent on that. I, I hope we're going back to the IT supplier out of Danvers, right? They should be doing stuff for us, and do we understand the contract, and what they should be doing for us, and are we holding them accountable for doing what they're supposed to be doing? So, if you'd like any help with that, just let me know. But they, they are your contractor, they should be, we shouldn't be doing anything around cyber independent of them, and I know we're not, but they, they should be doing certain things as well.
Yeah, I mean, I would reiterate everything certainly, but Kathy says, in particular, I know that you're probably taking on a greater onus with regard to the MBTA task force, because we're down a planner. But that's also leaning into your wheelhouse, at least, I think, from history, from where you came from.
Where I came from, yes. Been a few years.
So, we're lucky, I guess, in that respect, and that, that, that we have some of your past experience, experience to draw on. But I just look at all of the various balls that you've got in the air here, and you're pushing them along in a very responsive and timely time basis, so I think we're all fortunate to have.
I got enough more, I think that, I don't understand how you do it. I don't have to understand how you do it.
Yes.
And, no, I think it's like a well-oiled machine here.
Anne?
Becky?
What you see again?
I'm still here, can you hear me?
Sometimes.
Okay, I agree with what everybody said, and I know I've said it before, but I can't say it enough. I think our town is very fortunate to have Greg Fetterspiel. And I'm also very glad to hear that you are sharing some of your work with a couple of the, the potential potential people who might be interested, or involving them in your work. Thank you.
Basically, I agree with everybody. So, it's, it's, I'm intrigued that there are three people who work here, who think they might be able to step into your shoes.
Maybe all three together.
We do have some very good people.
You have an excellent team, you have an excellent.
And I, I'm glad to see that you're asking them to get training ahead of time. Because the one thing that would make me quit is having a brand-new town manager, town administrator with no clue what's going on. So, yes, making them show not just a desire for promotion, but a willingness to do the work to deserve the promotion is really good.
You're preparing them to compete, and that's all you can do, that's all you can do from a succession thing.
And.
In the coming months, you should see, see something out.
And I've noticed some tendency for you to answer difficult emails more frequently than you've had in the past. And I appreciate that.
Most of the time, I do get bothered. Folks have the strategy of dealing with emails, my inbox is a hundred plus emails, exactly.
Yeah.
Take advantage of some of the Microsoft filtering, to automatically filter stuff into folders and leverage Debbie to help you.
So that, I'm not doing that, so.
It's a big time saver. I used to have with my assistant, I used to have a, her name was Sue, a Sue folder, so certain things, I would, just the software would automatically wrote to Sue's folder, and, and we had a system between the two of us, we kinda talked through it, it's a huge time saver.
Debbie folder.
Yeah, you needed Debbie.
Debbie may not like that, after a while. Debbie's been a great help.
Awesome, absolutely, yes, but take advantage of the capabilities you got, and that will make, same for you, you know, it can make your life easier, too. You filter out a bunch of stuff, you know, you don't even need to see it all. Like, I, I get some vendors come in to me through my Manchester email, I don't know if you guys get, get that. Yep. Like, when I was in the working world, I would get like a hundred of those. Just stuff I didn't need to see, you know, and so you can figure out the keywords automated, gets the clutter out.
Kathy, do you hire out? I'm sure Debbie knows exactly what I'm talking about.
Okay, so, good news all around, yes, we're very lucky, the town's very lucky to have you, and we know it.
Thank you. There are, there are challenges, for sure. We've got a good team, and I appreciate all the work and the time and energy that you folks put in. At least I get a paycheck.
Are there liaison updates?
I did speak with Sarah, yeah, big name of the town, and she's been saying the communication with the problem with this new vendor versus the previous vendor.
Something in disguise, maybe?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, and this new vendor, he was here, they're gonna be on-site, there's always gonna be someone, one of the owners will be on-site at night. Okay. We heard Pickleball is moving that along, okay, and.
Look, okay.
Well, never got, I mean, they're still waiting to, well, nothing really changed.
Unfortunately, we haven't heard something, on the, on the subject. So, that's disappointing.
Kim had to say, but it's disappointing, okay, and I think that, you know, I think we were shooting perhaps something for the end of this year, but it's getting, the year is getting shorter and shorter and shorter, the days are getting shorter and shorter. And then there was just, and Pine Street, other than a couple of leaflets, is doing really well. So, yeah, I got Rex, you know, they're cranking up for the winter season basketball, and that's, your after-school program's doing very well.
The school committee meets tomorrow? Always in the, John?
I, I will put this in the liaison category, Boston Post Kane, and I think you all got an email that Gordon wasn't feeling so well. And I got an email at five o'clock this afternoon that he's well enough, and he's identified a time for, say, noon on Wednesday, because he's a hundred years old, I'm not gonna say, well, how about this, or how about that? It's noon on Wednesday, how many folks can make that?
I babysit.
I work on Thursdays.
I, I, I mean, I, I told them late in the afternoon was, was better, and I will come back with something, but I'll, you know, if noon is what they want, and they said they care.
Yeah, I should, I should be, I am non-contagious, and I should be, I am available on Wednesday, just.
Twenty minutes.
Shoot, shoot me the, the address.
I will, I, I will send it to, send it to everybody, it's gonna be at the museum. Because, because that's where the Boston Post Kane is, is held.
Okay.
And they've had a tough time getting it back, when they give it to people. Now it's not leas, all right, so I will.
Sorry.
That, that will work, yes, how about you, Becky?
I'm just gonna say, I'm sorry to say, I won't be able to make that, I really wish that I could, but I, I'm not able to, I'm sorry.
Okay, all right, so, just taking a survey.
I will be unable to attend.
Lunchtime. You're away, a little ways away. Okay, that's, that's the only thing I'm gonna touch on.
Okay, fine.
Let's see. On the consent agenda, I would like to take out article number C, which is the Parks and Rec appointment. Can we vote to approve the minutes, and Halloween trick-or-treating is one thing?
So moved.
Second. Oh, Brian?
Yes.
Becky?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Anne says yes.
John says yes.
And on the Parks and Rec committee appointment, we have a policy on appointments that says that we, we interview people ourselves.
And did it get posted? That we were gonna be, that there was an opening, where we're supposed to post the opening and give people, was it two weeks to?
No, there were two applicants, so.
Did, did we do an open posting?
I can't speak to that.
I don't think we did.
Sean Masterson is on.
I, I'm just asking Greg if there was an open posting, because.
Right.
I, I thought there was, but you didn't announce, I have to double check.
Yeah, because I, I don't recall seeing it on social media, and I know Tiffany has been doing that. When there's an open posting, I usually see it on one of the social media feeds, and I, I just don't recall seeing that one.
So, I think, unless we want to get into policies again, we have a policy that says the way appointments are made, and I suggest we follow it. So, we'd like to invite both candidates, well, I think we need to post.
First, verify that there was an open post, if not, then we should open post.
It can happen in the next two weeks.
Yeah, and then we come, you know, in our meeting, two weeks from now. Or three weeks from now, whenever, yeah.
Yeah, so, if you're appropriate, you two, just to cover our pieces, to announce the vacancy.
Yes.
Yeah.
And if anyone else applies, then we'd know, think they're into consideration as well, and.
And, and I'm going to say one thing more about this, and one of the reasons that the select board does these interviews is that committees tend to become self.
Insular.
Insular, yeah. And, and I think having an outside pair of eyes, several years later. Look, we'll keep committees from being self-reinforcing.
So, are we asking?
We're asking Mr. Masterson and the other candidate to be prepared to talk to us at our next regular meeting, which is November something.
November second.
November second.
With our appreciation for having waited.
Appreciation for their having volunteered, but we have this other process.
Right.
November second.
I'm sorry, that's all right.
Oh, it's a five, it's a five Monday month.
It's October.
Okay. I think we're are there anything we need to look at on the action items?
It just looks like some of the dates were a little and didn't see, I think the only thing I didn't see was the, we're supposed to add the action for coming back on the water rate discussion, was that here?
Proposing a water rate. Yeah, that's eleven-six.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see the word water in there, got it, yeah. Okay.
Where are we with the candidates from two weeks ago? If we're not here.
Yeah, we're struggling to get them scheduled.
We're struggling, okay.
Well, one backed out.
Oh, that's right.
I haven't heard back from the other one, I can't remember the name, but. Yeah, I've reached out a couple of times.
All right.
Well, I think twice is enough. Okay, county administrators report?
Yeah, so, we're working with the community center, so, same, they're making some good progress there. Well, regulations, the border health is, is still working on, on possible new regulations for, for all wells. One of the issues would be whether or not irrigation was required to have test in the backyard containers. So, that is something that would be new for, for folks. There will be some pushback. There will be some pushback from.
What others, yeah, what other towns do that?
Um, there are some, I don't, I don't know numbers, um.
Maybe in environmentally sensitive areas perhaps, so.
Yeah, so the, so the issue of PFAS is, is brought this. Is making it more of an issue these days.
It's a little bit much for me.
All right, I hear you.
Expensive assets.
And it's expensive.
Yeah, that's, yeah, it's expensive.
Those tests are not cheap.
Not looking at Saudi.
And, and, and they're not easy.
They're not easy. You, you really have to have a professional firm to. Company to do it right. So that, that's going to be an issue.
Um, I think they had a clause about not using irrigation wells during drought. Did they drop that?
Uh, so they're still reviewing it, um, and at their next meeting, they're going to go. One more time before they say this is what we want to propose, so I don't know the steps.
That would kind of undercut our effort to. Move irrigation off of treated water.
Yes, I agree.
And, and. Are they. Aware of the maps of, um. The watersheds?
Um, relationship to these wells.
Yeah, relationship to wells, yeah.
So that'll be, um, looking its way through, um. After the next border health meeting, a couple of weeks from now, they'll be. Reviewing it, and then a couple of weeks after that. I think that's where they hope to hold a public hearing. Um, I think it'd be helpful if they came in to present to you prior to the public hearing. So. So that might be on the sixth, we'll have to see how the timing works out. So, moving on to the topic, uh, some, some trees along 127. These are under. They. And so. Some residents reached out to sign a tire, sign a tires office, reached out to me. Would like to add your voice to the request. Uh, there's some dead trees, basically from. Near the, uh, overpass, railroad overpass, out, then going east towards Hickory Hill. There's a few, uh, few dead trees along the road that. That people are concerned about dropping dead branches and. So if you're a medical, I could certainly send an email to the senator's office that you would endorse that effort.
I'm a medical.
So she's fine with a dead tree is being removed, yeah, okay.
I, I, I think, yes.
Maybe you can staff that out.
For the side, uh, for the hearings. Okay, thank you for that, um. Yeah, we already talked about MBTA task force, in terms of the consultant coming out, we had a good, a good session on Saturday. A very good turnout, good, good questions, good back and forth all around, I hope. So. We'll continue to try to move that along, and then, um. If, if your schedule allows, uh, the students from MIT will be coming. To the task force meeting on the twenty-sixth, that evening.
Uh, tie it up to twenty-sixth.
In the morning.
In the morning, we'll have a meeting of this. So this will be a preliminary presentation, and then they will make a, a final presentation at, uh, at the end of the semester, in early December. So they're looking for some feedback on some of their initial ideas. There, uh, it's a design studio class, basically. And they'll be giving some, some suggestions as to what they think might, uh, fit in with the character of the town. May, maybe some, some good guides for some design standards that we might want to incorporate. That's coming up. Well, that's what I have.
I've run out of agenda.
Okay, four, ten.
Second.
Yes.
Yes.
Kathy, yes.
Yeah, but, yeah.
Yes.
And Becky?
I think, I think we might have lost that there.
Oh.
It looks like.
Happy hour machine.
I know, but very.
Yeah.
Including a public forum. Open session, I should say.
Can I say something that I feel very bad about for the past week that since the last time I saw you? I feel guilty.